Good evening and we are calling the March fourth Board of Education meeting to order. We have a tobacco policy in place, there's no smoking within one hundred feet of a school building. Please rise for the pledge. District Clerk, will you please call roll?
Trustee Conunson?
Here.
Trustee Jerome?
Here.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Here.
Trustee Goodrich?
Here.
Trustee Hemingway Lynch?
Here.
Trustee Ramondo?
Here.
Trustee Bishop?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss tenure for specific employees and the Antia negotiations. Trustee Lynch, second, trusty Goodrich, all in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. We should be back in one hour.
May I have a motion to exit executive session and return to public session? Trustee Knudsen, second, trustee Lynch, all in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Onto our welcome from the Bennett principal, Mr. Gabriel Bono.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome back to Bennett. We've had so much going on, in fact, actually, it wasn't so long ago, I felt like you guys were just here. Compared to the fall, it's, you know, twice a month, it's frequent, but more so for you. Anyway, I just want to recognize the leadership of the Bennett PTA through Christina Signor and Janice Thierry. They're doing an amazing job adding to the richness and magic of Bennett, putting on so many different events currently. And for all the board members, I don't know if you noticed, normally you meet in executive session in room 11, and we didn't tonight because the room next door was decorated with glitter and all kinds of balloons and celebrations. This, I'll let Ms. Kovak tell you why momentarily. Anyway, the PTA is here, they're thriving, and we actually have two authors coming in this week. I'm not going to talk about it because Ms. Kovak will later. You're not?
Not the authors.
Not the authors, okay. So, it's Read Across America Week, and the PTA has helped me get Kayla Miller and, who's your on a blank? Matthew Holmes, Matthew Holmes, who was here last year. So, we have a three through five assembly tomorrow, and then a K through two assembly on Friday, and they're selling books, and then the teachers are partnering with the PTA this Thursday night for a special event. You're talking about that. Okay. And then, at the end of the month, they're putting on a variety show, and that's always a wonderful event. It's so memorable because the students come out, and this community always proves that they've got talent. So, I just want to give kudos to the PTA for all their partnership and all that they do. I'm going to pass off the microphone to our two liaisons, and we'll start with Liz Corcito, who's our math liaison.
Good evening, everybody, thank you. So, I'm here to talk about the upcoming New York State tests, preferably from a math perspective. So, as educators, we are tasked with the responsibility of preparing our young students for the state tests. Our goal is to help them feel prepared, organized, equipped with strategies, and overall to feel successful as learners. And third grade through fifth grade teachers are given, were given the opportunity to look over last year's state tests and look for areas of improvement. And in all three grade levels, two subject areas popped up for us, and those were fractions and geometry, and they were identified as the areas that needed additional support. So, as teachers following a curriculum, as we always do in math, it makes sense that fractions and geometry are the two areas in need of improvement. And every year, the state tests kind of overload the students with questions on fractions and geometry, and the real area of concern from the teacher's perspective is that in all grade levels, geometry is a unit that doesn't get taught until after the New York State tests. So, we always seem to be rushing and kind of give like a crash course in geometry before the state test to give kids, you know, some, you know, examples of what they'll be seeing and what it is, and of course, that is not good educational practice or teaching practice at all, and nor is it good for our students. And fractions, that's a unit that's usually taught right before the state tests, and I know from my, from my experience, I always feel like I'm rushing it to make sure I'm fitting the whole unit in before state test time or that prep time that I give my students. So, those are the two areas that I just feel, and my third grade counterparts, my fifth grade counterparts, are feel that we're kind of floundering in. So, we're, we've been busy working on solutions, and some solutions that we're currently mapping out and currently using, for example, for those two areas, we've been, for morning work, we've been incorporating some fraction practice, geometry practice, using our Freckle program and assigning geometry work and fraction work. We have been doing early finisher activities in those areas, some guided practice, some homework activities in those areas. I know in fourth grade, I've been working on problem of the day with the students to kick off math lessons, and just, you know, fifth grade, third grade, fourth grade, we're really working hard just to incorporate those skills earlier on and more in a way that doesn't feel so rushed and consolidated, and more easy and more fun for the kids. And that's what we've been doing as, as grade level teachers, and just trying to find fun, good ways, good educational practice ways to get these areas improved. All right? Thank you.
Hello, I'm Amanda Kovak. I feel like January was not that long ago, and we were talking about with ELA best practices and how we're using state, the NWEA and all of our assessments to really guide our instruction. So, now that we're in quarter three, we are continuing to do that, but we're also looking a little bit deeply into the state assessments as well, and we are seeing an alignment of the NWEA scores with state assessment scores. And so, thinking about that, we met as a team, we're working on that vertical alignment, and I think primary too is involved in this so that we can see what are the areas that we need to work on. And I always have a writing rule of three, so here are my three things that I feel like for ELA we're working on. The first one is, as a whole, building stamina is so important. I think we're so busy in our lives that we just need to find time to read more, really push that higher level for read alouds, all of that, and so growing those deeper ideas with character is super important, and with stamina, where we're lacking in some ways is that construction, constructed response. And so, a lot of our students are answering the first part and not getting to that second part, so we're aware of this, and we're just building that stamina and using computers to do that as well because it is a computerized test. I really am excited that our Heinemann Flight has digital writing access, so some brand new, I feel like our curriculum is on it, finding engaging ways to really do the next generation standards, best practices going right in it, and academic language, there's some great games, activities, hands-on that we're doing. So, that's my second thing. We hope to build academic language. When you hear the word theme, you know, all of those, the figurative language, metaphors, simile, like all of that, we're trying to build for our students, and the literary elements always come up too, that's an area, you know, thinking about the plot. Our third thing really is just to continue to build partnership, and I think that Bennett has been doing a fabulous job with our PTA, with our faculty, and with the students. I always say we're a triangle, and every point is so important, and so the guardians are just as important as the students, as the educators, and we need to work together as a team. So, I'm really excited that we get to announce our first hope-to-be annual Bennett Literacy Fair night, that's this Thursday from 5:30 to 7:45. There's, our theme this year is math, so we are trying to incorporate the content areas, and this year we chose, so staff volunteers are going to do interactive read-alouds following best practice, state standard, you know, activities, and families get to come and enjoy and see, you know, what this event might be like, and we're going to have bingo at the end, there's going to be a measuring station, I have a flyer that looks like this, and the PTA is giving every student, whether they attend or not, a free high-interest level book. It's unbelievable. So, students who walk in will get to choose, they'll go to their section, they choose a book right off, that's how the event starts. Then, we have a scavenger hunt, an estimation jar count, and we have two reading sessions. I can kind of pass this, this is a student example, their ticket, they get to bring their ticket in, we'll have copies on hand, and so the first session is a half an hour read aloud session that they read a book, and they do an activity, then they go to their second session, all done by staff volunteers too. And I do think there's going to be some student volunteers, which is exciting too, and I hopefully, like, what I love to do with this event is to have the older kids become ambassadors, but because this is our first annual, it's K-5, free bingo, we have Phoenisha Diner donating some delicious cookies, we're going to have hot cocoa, pajamas, it's going to be awesome. So, we're just trying to spread the word, and anyone is welcome to attend. This is a little bit of a last minute, we're trying to get this going, otherwise I would have formally invited you all, but does this count a little? You guys, anyone can come. Anything else I need to say? All right, so yeah, let's just work on building stamina, the academic language, and just continuing to partnership because what is this all about? It's all about the students and their success and achievement, and we're hoping to create lifelong readers and writers and learners. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you, Amanda, and if you didn't, we didn't mention it, Amanda's our ELA liaison. They're representative of the staff, the meetings that they're having, I have, I have to say, the, the new Bennett staff is completely industrious, the old one was too, but, you know, there's a new energy now, and we've been meeting almost on a weekly basis after school to have pointed discussions about math and ELA, and we're talking about refining our practice so that your students reap the benefits, and their dissertations were an example of that. Does anybody have any questions for me? Have a...
I just wanted to make a comment that it's so wonderful to hear the intelligence and strategy behind having fun for the school, and very heartening to hear from both head of math and ELA at Bennett. That's great, thank you, Mr. Bono, that's great.
I want us to celebrate the teachers for the fact that they're merging literacy and math together, it's just, it's a, it's a great partnership, another great example of the partnership we have here. Yes, Sarah?
I can attest, because I have two third graders here, that I've been working on haikus about math at home, just before this meeting, partly because I was a little late, actually. I was working on a haiku about math, so it's coming Thursday night, you should all come.
Well, thank you, and we'll see you on Earth Day in April.
Thank you so much. All right, on to acceptance of minutes, we're at 4.01. The Board of Education hereby accepts the minutes of the February 18th, 2025 meeting. May I have a first? Trustee Knudsen, second, trustee Ramondo, any questions or comments? All right. Trustee Knudsen?
Aye.
Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Amentra Morale?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
Okay, great, that's unanimous, thank you. Superintendent District News?
Good evening. Under the Athletic News headline, I need everyone to know that Cole Madison was the Section 9, 190-pound winner. He advanced to the state championships this past weekend, finishing up a very great career here at Antioa. Ryland Reynolds competed last week at the state championships for skiing and showed a strong representation, and she is also finishing up her career here at Antioa. Waylon Brown was an alternate at the ski championships, also a senior, so we have some very accomplished seniors. This evening, both girls and boys basketball teams are competing in the Section 9 semifinals. The girls are at James O'Neil, they started at five, and the boys are home tonight, and they started at six, so if they both win, they will play this Thursday for the Section 9 So if they both win, they will play this Thursday for the Section 9 championship at Mount St. Mary College. Boys will play at five and girls will play at seven. I believe our athletic director is going to text me when the games are over so that we can all know. We have held steady at using three of our seven snow days, although Mother Nature does often surprise us. I'm beginning to feel confident that we will end this season with an excess of days. I don't think we can necessarily count on having all four left over, left over for this year yet. We have in the past had emergency weather days in March and at least once in April. But to be in this position on March 4th is really a positive. And just as a reminder, if by some chance we didn't, don't use any of those four, the Give Back Days for students and 10-month staff are May 23rd, May 27th, April 21st, and May 22nd. So that would extend the Memorial Day weekend and also add a day to spring break. We held our final community forum last week and I just want to say that I'm so grateful to all of the community members who have dedicated their time to joining us and participating in this process. At the conclusion of the session last week, we asked individuals to fill out a thought catcher. We have since also shared the thought catcher with our principals and asked for faculty to be given the opportunity to complete them and send them back to us. The thought catchers asked the person filling it out, which components of the bond they view as most important? And whether the respondent felt like they would vote yes, no, or undecided if they were to vote right then and there? And also what additional information or clarity would be needed to vote with confidence? At the forum, we had 19 thought catchers return to us. And 14 indicated they would vote yes, four were undecided, and one did not actually indicate. And there were none that indicated they would vote no. Trustee Bishop and I attended the Shandaken Town Board meeting last week to hear the discussion related to the Phoenisha campus. The town was sharing with the community, kind of working through the, the thought process of if they did have the opportunity to acquire the campus for a dollar. And they were remarking that based on state education law, that would then limit how they could utilize the building. For example, they would not be able to lease space in the building to for-profit entities. In their initial thought process, they had believed that they could create revenue through leasing space in the building that would support the maintenance and upgrades. But only being able to lease to municipalities or not-for-profit entities, entities is a limiting factor. There was discussion related to if the district were to put the campus up for sale on the open market and the town was able to purchase it, then there would not be limits on how they would be able to use the property. But it was also mentioned that in that scenario, the town may not be the highest bidder. And selling a building on the open market, the district would not be able to pick who to sell it to, but would be required to sell to the highest bidder. The town supervisor also had noted that he was concerned with the timeline that we would need to follow to have that be put on our May ballot, which is we would have to approve it at the board table by March 18th. He had reached out apparently to the Board of Elections to talk about putting it on the November ballot, but he's gonna follow up with them because I don't believe that would work because it would need to be approved by our school district voters. So having it on the, the November ballot wouldn't necessarily accomplish that. Just after leaving that meeting, I felt that the town is likely not going to be ready to commit in time for us to have this included on the May ballot, but we are waiting to hear follow-up from the town board. They were hoping to have additional meetings. And there were a number of community members there. I think it was a really good idea for them to have that meeting and get input and feedback. Just a reminder, our Meet, Greet, Neat is gonna be on April 7th from 5:30 to 7:30. And I believe at last count, there are 11 restaurants participating now.
There are, yes, 11. And we will also have some demonstrations from Ulster Bosse's.
Amazing. I believe flyers will be coming soon, recognizing all of our donors and restaurants. And next week, on March 12th, we will have a superintendent's conference day, so students will not be in session, but the day will be filled with really great opportunities for professional development. That will include sessions on co-teaching, assessments, MTSS, and there will also be very important safety teamwork taking place as well.
Any questions for the superintendent? Emily?
Will you just read the Give Back Days one more time? Or if they're, I don't know where they are online or...
If you look online on the website under our district, there's the one-page calendar. And it's on the, it's on the back. So if we stick with, if we, if we continue to have four days left over, they will be May 23rd, May 27th, April 21st, and May 22nd. But you can see the calendar shows if we were to use one, then what it would be if there were three days left or if there were two days left.
All right. Onto our student representative report. Olivia?
Good evening. This week, there are many exciting events. Tomorrow evening will be the Trivia Bowl from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM in the high school cafeteria. And Thursday, the high school powder buff game will be after school. Boys will play volleyball and girls will coach. This past weekend, the middle school science Olympia team traveled to compete in a tournament. As mentioned prior, our athletes have been having a very successful winter season. Our high school athletes participated in the track and field state qualifier at the Armory, competed in the New York State Wrestling Tournament, and skiers competed in the New York State Championships. This weekend, our swimmers will be competing at the state championships. And tonight's, as mentioned prior, girl, girls and boys basketball teams are playing in the sectional semifinal games. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Olivia. And I'm sorry, board, I skipped over board district news. Are there any trustees that have any news to report? Trustee Knudsen?
I just wanted to invite anybody, I just wanted to pick up on the, the Trivia Bowl tomorrow from 3:00 to 5:00. It's a new Booster Club event. There, we have six teams that are a mixture of students and teachers. There's gonna be fierce competition, there's gonna be fun prizes. The cafeteria should be rocking between 3:00 and 5:00. So if you're in the, if you're on the campus, pop your head in, it should be very entertaining.
I think I might be jumping the gun. Um, we did preview a technological tool, but the rest of the board hasn't looked at it yet. So, but there, can I?
You can talk about it.
Okay. Parents Square is something that we demoed, the, the comms team demoed last week. And it is a platform that would potentially be available to the parents in our district to access. It basically integrates all the, our different marketing channels or news channels. So, and you are, you can also correspond directly one-on-one with teachers all in a single space. So as a communications tool, it's kind of outstanding and has a lot of potential. I texted offline with trustee Lynch and I said, "Oh, my gosh." And she said, "I'm drooling." So, I mean, it could really potentially, and add to that if you would like to, but it, it really, Superintendent Allison, you already use it in your district and just can see the potential of, for me, having my notifications because I'm not on social media and I don't care to be, for me to have those notifications in the palm of my hand or to be able to correspond with a teacher if I'm having a correspondence or know that a banned practice has been canceled and it's all right there in one place. Boy, that sounds like a genius idea. So hopefully that will come to pass.
Thank you. Any other trustees? All right. We'll move on to our presentation on the structure and of the capital improvement project.
Can I just let everybody know, unfortunately, our girls lost?
Oh.
Forty-two to thirty-four, so it sounds like they put up a fight.
I just want to, before you begin your presentation, in agenda setting, trustee Ramondo and I have the opportunity to really participate in the, well, we get to hear the presentation in agenda setting, we review the slides, we get to make recommendations if something isn't quite clear. And one thing that Assistant Superintendent Leclerc mentioned this time in agenda setting was that as she gets into the details of the, of the presentation, she's gonna, she, she's going to ask us if we have any questions, like page by page, instead of waiting until the end. And she's gonna really, and I said to her, "Do me a favor. When you're making this presentation, you know, pretend you're speaking to kindergartners." Because for some of us, like, like me, a lot of this information is really, you know, difficult. And it's, it really helps if it, if you just take your time and explain it to us. And we really appreciate that.
Absolutely. So as we like to start, or as we have started many of our presentations, is the distillation that was created back in the spring of 2024. So it's been almost a year. We like to review this, this is really kind of, tells us why we're here and why we're doing this work. So I will let Superintendent McLaren discuss.
I don't know that we need to discuss this one again. We've reviewed, reviewed it a number of times, but it just continues to remain sort of our guiding star. We always want to be working through this process, keeping our students first, being staff forward, being fiscally responsible and working with the community. And that has been, those are our guiding rules throughout this process and we always want to honor that and continue to remind ourselves of it. So we will continue to put that in our presentations in some way and we just always want to come back to that as our start.
And I know at the last board meeting, we had done a much more in-depth presentation into these kind of four areas, well, mostly into the student-first area. So I guess I would just say, is, are there any questions that maybe the board members still have in regards to one of these four quadrants that, you know, we haven't done a good job of explaining why, you know, why we have this as kind of our guiding premise?
That's a wonderful reminder. And anyone who has not seen the previous presentation, please look at it, it's on board docs or watch the video because we did really go into, in-depth into the students component and I think it's really worthwhile.
Yes?
Just wanted to make the comment that I know that these are at the heart of everything that the administration and the board is working towards. I just also want to recognize that, you know, subjectively, depending upon your point of view in the district, those values could change and I just want to recognize that for the public.
Okay.
Can you hear me? Okay. So one of the things, I think this applies mostly to the elementary. And one of the slides I thought that was missing was the why for all the middle school, high school and the supplemental stuff. Some of it's obvious, but we, we don't have a slide for the why for, for that part of it.
We can add.
So as we are contemplating transition planning for a central campus, we want to just really articulate what we would want to work through. So we really would want to ensure that the spirit of our community vision is realized. We would, just like we did with the Phoenisha building closing and that transition, we would want to work with the faculty, staff, and PTA and really recognize that sense of loss and honor and celebrate the unique building culture and history. Do deeper design planning with staff, gather input from students. There would be regular meetings to plan logistics and clear communication about timelines and what families can expect throughout the entire process.
One thing that, thank you for this and it's really helpful to go through it again. And one thing that I've been thinking about, of course, is also the, the opportunity that I think we have, you know, to do, to bring some of the, the students together beyond, which is always was helpful. I was a parent during the Phoenisha transition and a parent of a, of a sixth grader going to the middle school. So I really appreciate that you talked about the input from students. I think that's so valuable. At the same time, I recognize that I'm not gonna have the class right, but there's a the group of kids that are coming together in the sixth grade for the first time. They don't know their peers yet from, at, at an elementary level. And I'm thinking about potentially adding, you know, an intention to try to do some of that because I know there was some wonderful opportunities to bring the Bennett and Phoenisha kids together in a way. And I think we should be intentional about thinking of how, how we can bring those classes together that are currently at Bennett and at Woodstock. They will be coming together, but then also those kids that are going into the middle school together. Is that helpful?
Yeah, absolutely. We can add that. So again, this is just reiterating kind of the process that was followed during the transition from the Phoenisha campus and integrating those students and staff into the Boyceville campus. There were regularly scheduled meetings with staff and a lot of planning went into meeting the needs of the students and the staff for the transition. Transitioning the sixth grade to the middle school and for the Phoenisha Elementary transition, there was a transition committee that was created and we met once a month. And there were people from across the district who participated in that because sometimes you get great ideas from other people who are in similar situations. It's not just limited to a small group of people. And it really created an additional conduit for communication throughout the district. And we were able to really collaborate and work together to problem solve. We wanted to ensure that the student input and ownership. And so there were a number of projects that were done. We funded the mural painting that happened for the Phoenisha students that had a mural designed and painted here and as well as the mural that was painted and designed in the middle school and students participated in that. Planning with the community and the PTA to celebrate the history of the building. I think the Phoenisha PTA did an extraordinary job and we supported in every way we could, providing budget support for student-centered educational and SEL activities. Supporting through the, the SEL work was also really important and we, we definitely enlisted the help of our representative from Morningside to do specific work related to that. Obviously, there needs to be discussions about what can be done with a former school building and we are, as I shared a little while ago, currently in discussions with the town board in Shandaken. And then providing communication to families. And that's, you know, really important. We will continue that, continue having updates to our website, continue with our PTA discussions. And supporting everybody is really our priority. So we will build on the experience that we had and try and make it even better for this next transition.
So these are the numbers that we had presented at the community forums. These are our revised project, project budget details, looking at the additional wing at Bennett at just under 12.5 million, the new Bennett drop-off lane. And then, as you see on the other column, new gymnasium, replacing windows, renovating, adding a music room, reconfiguring the cafeteria kitchen, reconfiguring...
adding a music room, reconfiguring the cafeteria kitchen, reconfiguring Bennett outdoor space. And then those kind of miscellaneous items, drainage, electrical boiler and fuel tank removal at a little over $38.5 million. Secondary, these numbers have not changed either. The high school science classrooms, counseling suite, main office renovations, nurses' suite, and auditorium at 8.2. And I realized I forgot to stop at that slide because I'm so good at just keep going forward. So these numbers haven't changed since we presented, but are there any questions about any of these? These numbers, these are the elementary, secondary? No? Okay. And then our campus site work. The multi-use athletic field, the turf, the track upgrades, field lights, drainage, demolishing the bus garage, the student commons, and then upgrading the east end parking lot at the middle school, high school. Yes?
So I think we originally looked at these numbers, what, at our last board meeting, right? That's when we first saw them. So two weeks, two weeks or something like that.
Correct.
So I'm still wrapping my head around them. I know at the time, we sort of asked if you could like prioritize, was, has there been any prioritization in terms of, you know, again, I go back to that first visioning. It's only been a year, but that first visioning session, I just remember so distinctly like, this is what's happening, these are the must haves, and this is the vision. And I'm wondering whether anything has been teased out.
We have not teased anything out and, um...
I just wanted to say, you know, we got the thought catchers, but we're still getting those thought catcher ideas from the faculty and staff as well. And once we have all of them, the front page pretty much listed all of the components and asked people sort of what their priorities were. So that will help inform that discussion.
Yeah, the thought catchers sound interesting and would be super interesting to have available to the Woodstock Elementary and Bennett and Elementary, seeing as that these things will affect them so directly. Or actually, all the schools in the district. So is there further plans to have those thought catchers more widely? Just the 19 that was at the, you mentioned 19?
The principals have been distributing them to the faculty and gathering them back.
And parents and, and...
Just the faculty have gotten them at this point.
Okay. I'm just wondering if as a board, we might want to have those more accessible to more people so that we can really, you know, get that feedback.
So these were the total numbers that were, oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to mention, while we have the student, student rep here. She did a great job in the last board meeting, explaining why we, why the multi-use turf field is so important. I've had a lot of discussions about that, but when I heard it from a, a student and why it's important, it, it helped. So thank you very much.
So again, this is the same numbers that we had presented two weeks ago. So looking at the construction budget, the incidental budget for both the building work and the campus site work, we are at just under 70,500,000. And as we mentioned at the last meeting, because we are estimating in 2025 for something that won't be completed until 2028, there are a lot of contingencies built into this number. Again, we, we don't want to undercut ourselves. We don't want to say it, you know, we're only going to ask for this and then not, not do what we want to do, not give the community what they asked for.
Yes, and I'm glad to hear there's contingencies, especially, you know, with tariffs. I work for the restaurant industry and, you know, everything comes from Mexico. And so we're looking at very, very, very drastic increases in prices. Wood from Canada, building, construction, you know, these are things that are gonna, you know, everything is in disarray right now. So I'm glad to hear that you're considering these massive shifts in our, in our country. It's such a big, huge capital project, eye-popping really. So we need to be careful.
And I just wanted to, I think I know the answer to this, but I just want to ask it. For the public's benefit that might be watching, if we decide, the amount that we bond would be a no more than, we could not spend more than that amount.
Correct.
So if costs were to run up, then the district would either have, would have to figure out a way to do little, figure out to do a little less or do, you know, but make do with the money that the voters have already approved. And it will not, we could, could not spend more than that.
Right. Unlike what happens to a lot of people when they build their own home and there are cost overruns and they have to figure out how to get the money to finish building their house. With a school project, you go out to bid after the project, after the, after it's, you know, approved by SED. And the bid is, that's the cost. They can't go over what the bid is. So as long as those bids come in at or below the budget, we're good. If they do not, then we make adjustments, either take some things out, you know, maybe change the type of flooring to something a little less expensive, things like that. And then, you know, sometimes end up going back out to bid. But you cannot go over budget. Illegal.
Could that potentially mean that what we're voting for could, could change if things got too expensive? Like, oh, I'm voting for this thing because I, I really want that, that field, the turf, you know? And but then maybe we wouldn't get the turf. Could that potentially happen?
That's the case with every capital project in every school district over the course of every project. So, and we have had that situation in the past with certain projects. And there have been things like the bathrooms that didn't get done in the project that they were intended to be done in. So we put them on a list and we did them in the future in another project.
So in kind of just summarizing what we're looking at, because I rounded a little bit because, you know, those dollars at the end were bothering me. Using capital reserve and cash of $15 million and looking to finance approximately $55,500,000 for a total project cost on the ballot of 70,500,000. Again, it's a not-to-exceed amount. The borrowing is a not-to-exceed amount. If we end up with more cash, we can always reduce what we end up financing. This truly would be a not-to-exceed amount. Questions?
I just, and maybe I'm getting ahead because I've seen a copy of this before tonight. But I'm just looking at that and I'm wondering also, does this give us, if, let's just say the whole thing does pass and we do have a total of $70 million, does it give us the latitude to think about using our capital reserve or cash for things that are not aidable or things that may potentially go up in, because of, you know, tariffs from Canada or other things that are just outside of, uh, that we might, you know, strategically be able to think about and see and advise? I'm just curious if, if that's how this works.
Well, so, so it, it's not an easy process. And this is very difficult to put in kindergarten language. What, what the $70,500,000 maximum means is that's the maximum construction cost. Now, understanding we've also built incidentals in there. You, you could end up paying for some incidentals out of your regular budget. And then you have more money for the construction. The aidability really depends on, on SED. So next steps would be to work with SED and explain to them why we're doing this. This is what New York State wants. New York State wants schools to consolidate. We've had conversations with SED, plenty of conversations. And this is truly what they want. Because they understand that one building, maintaining one building is less expensive than maintaining three. And then they, because they're also on the hook for building aid. We could do buildings on all three, I'm sorry, projects on all three buildings, in which case the state would have to pay us aid on all three buildings. Well, that's a lot of money coming out of the state. The state would much rather us have one building. And now they're only giving us aid on one building. So it's actually to their benefit for us to consolidate. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, just, certainly, the state is going to have an efficiency argument, right? So that's, we're students, staff, community, and fiscal responsibility. We're all of those things. So I always like to remember that. Question, so capital reserve, will, will, will we have money left for a rainy, like, what will our capital reserves like, look like if we spend that 15 mil?
Well, I think that's it. I think you're asking two, two questions. So if we spend that 15 million, we will be spending the money that the voters authorized us to save and spend for that purpose, which is what a capital reserve is. Which is separate from a rainy day fund. So we have other reserves, but we also have 4% unappropriated fund balance, which is by definition, a rainy day fund.
And what, and what dollar amount is in that 4% capital reserve?
It's 4% of the next year's budget.
And that's generally approximately...
Right now, it's about 2.5 million.
Okay. Thank you.
And then don't forget, we also have other reserves. You know, we have our ERS reserve, we have our workers' comp reserve. So we do have other reserves as well.
I just want to offer to the trustees, it's on your dashboard, the totals.
Thank you for that. So as I said, kind of, I guess back in December, that this would be the, the board meeting that we would kind of really have our estimated tax implication. And the reason is, is until we could, until we could give fiscal advisors solid numbers and a solid plan, they really could not kind of plan it out for the next 15 to 20 years. So just for, for your knowledge, so Fiscal Advisors is a registered municipal advisory firm. Since 1967, they have supported over $60 billion in project financing. They are registered with the SEC. And they assist over 600 municipalities, school districts, and public authorities in New York State. So they are the experts. So this slide is a little big, but it kind of goes by fiscal year and how we plan on using the money and how we plan on paying for things. So as you can see, 15 million capital reserve, we would use that first. Then estimated, hold on, my glasses. Estimated required band principal for kind of continuing, 480, 940. Then estimated additional bands in the third column with interest in the fourth column. And then as you get to the fifth column, you're looking at your bond interest and payments. So we're looking at bond interest and payments at roughly fiscal year ending 2031. The debt service column, as you can see, is a combination of the prior columns. So we would be paying in 2028 roughly 2.87 million. And their logic is, is from the savings, we can actually pay part of our band. So now we don't have to bond that money. And as you can, as you go over in the columns, you can see with the savings, the estimated consolidation savings, that the estimated local share is just under $2,000. So 15 cents per $100,000 of assessment, which is about a penny a month. And as you go down the columns, or down the rows in the years, you can see that you, the consolidation savings grows. And it's based on, I think, it was based on two, we gave her, we told her 2%, we wanted to be conservative. And as you can see, that the estimated local share is actually negative. Which means it will not cost the taxpayers any more than what they are paying already for the project. So the next slide kind of just shows for those in the audience and at home, what those savings looks like. Questions? I know it's a lot. Yes?
Just because there are different values in the different columns. This, this column is actually dollars.
Dollars.
So the first number is $1,877.
Yes.
And then...
That's the estimated local share, taking the consolidation savings into account.
Thank you.
So look, oh, sorry.
Just so, for those following, this is, you know, a big change from what we talked about at the community forum and at the meeting before that. So just so I understand that before, we talked about, you know, roughly, our, our example has been a home that's assessed at $400,000. Are we now saying that the cost for a home assessed at $400,000 would be 4 cents, essentially?
Yes.
Per year, the first year?
Yes. And I do have a slide that kind of explains, you know, understanding that when I projected, I did it just 31%. This is our, you know, I, I don't have, I don't have the tools to do this. So that's why we had to wait until we had, you know, actual. And again, I was probably being more, well, I was obviously being more conservative than even the financial advisors.
Thank you.
So for example, an example of your conservatism came up in the last presentation when you did the bus comparison, right? The, the bus, our bus people ran the, the current student population through the software that plans routes. And they thought we could eliminate seven routes. And you said, well, let's just say, well, it's only going to be six because we want to be conservative. So these, the fiscal advisors, did they operate on a seven number? Or, in other words, would they take it all the way out? Or is there some conservatism still in this? You don't know?
They took our numbers, but we were conservative in that we kept the savings very static and we did not add escalations.
I see. So it's mostly comes from escalations over 20 years?
Yes.
Thank you.
That plus paying off, like, in, in, in her mind, if we had the savings already, let's use that savings to pay down the band. So we're actually not borrowing as much when, for the long term. Yes?
So the middle column there and the last number at the bottom. So theoretically, that last year, the tax bill for 100,000 would be minus $85.15.
For the project. But understand that by that year, you know, the budget is still, you know, we still have teacher contracts, ONTEA contracts. I know that the question had arisen, kind of, how do we know these savings are really going to happen? So I kind of remembered, I wasn't here at the time. But when the district decided to go from 3K6 buildings to 2K3s and a 46, that was the end of 2012. It was actually, my daughter was in sixth grade. She was the last class to go through Woodstock as a sixth grader. I looked at the budget. So the 2011-2012 budget, when we were 3K6s, was $50,541,121. The 1213 budget, this is when we were still three buildings. So we were still moose, we were still sending kids to three different buildings, was $49,686,922. So just by moving kids, not even closing a building, we saved over $850,000. So that, I mean, that is historical accurate, that was actual savings. So I think it's easy to extrapolate from that, what you're going to save if you consolidate into one district.
So if, if we go beyond the last row and we no longer have, we've already paid off our, our bond, we should see a more significant savings there.
Yes, yes and no. There won't be debt, but, you know, will your, will your roof need to be replaced by then? I mean, ideally, schools should continue projects so that the debt kind of remains stable throughout the life of the school. So that it's always, that's kind of, your debt payment is relatively the same. So there is no additional tax burden because of the debt.
Well, but what I want to clarify is we wouldn't look to have another $70 million project because we wouldn't need that level of maintenance. There would still be maintenance that would need to be done in the future, but it would not be to that level.
So kind of looking at our state aid projections, you can see where the high school would be at a, be aided at 15 years, Bennett would be aided at 20, and as I think I mentioned last time, there would be no aid on the bus garage. But you can see, out of the $55 million that we're borrowing, 28 million of it is coming back to us from the state. Questions? So kind of, oop.
Sorry, I'm just going to keep asking-
You're catching me off guard.
I'm just going to keep asking clarifying questions, because we talk about state aid in many different contexts. This is state building aid, not state foundation aid.
Correct. I will make sure to, to remind everybody, this is state building aid. Again, 31% of aidable projects. So kind of looking at what changed, as, as I mentioned, we're 15 years for the middle school, high school, and the field campus site work. We're 20 years for Bennett. We're looking at 95% aid for the middle school, high school, and Bennett. 0% for the bus garage, and approximately 75% for the field campus site work. But as, as Rick so kindly mentioned, it's really the 2% increase in those consolidation savings that, that really has, you know, kind of changed these estimates. And again, these are based on estimates from fiscal advisors and state ed. Questions? Okay. So looking at the financing summary, now again, this is not exactly what would happen. This is based on what we know today, because as we said, things can change. Bond, ban, and bond anticipation notes or bands would be issued from 2027 to 2029, estimated at about 4%. Serial bonds would then be issued around 2030, maturing between 2043 and 2048, at an estimated 4.15% interest. And as you, as you could see from the slide, that the annual debt service payments would be gradually decreasing annually, and the projected annual tax impact per $100,000 of assessed home is zero. State aid and local share impact. Building aid is expected to begin in 2028, 29. The estimated aid, as we said, over 20 years is about 27 million. The local share over 20 years is about 53 million, because understanding there's also interest. Questions? So how does accumulated savings work? So we're reducing ongoing costs. When savings are created, because we're reducing our unnecessary expenses, those costs aren't going to be in future budgets. So that means the budget doesn't have to grow to cover them. For example, a teacher that isn't, isn't replaced next year is then not replaced for every year, including, remember, their retiree health benefits, which is a large cost, too. The compounding effect, so if a district saves 500, $500,000 this year, well, they're saving $1 million next year, because you're not paying the 500,000 this year. But the next year, you've saved that 500, plus another 500. So offsetting the future increases, as many of you know, our contracts have, have increases in there for every year, so you would be offsetting those increases. And that, and that savings helps cover part of those things, so the overall budget doesn't need to increase as much. And then, as we said, you know, we'd look to invest in cost-efficient solutions. If possible, some additional savings can be, can come from those, smart investments, upgrading energy-efficient systems, solar, geothermal. Again, looking at grants as much as possible. That would then help reduce the financial strain of utilities in the future budgets. So again, over time, consistently finding and maintaining savings helps control the budget growth, making it more manageable, and less of a burden on taxpayers and the organization. Any questions? Okay. Tried to put as many words on this slide to help us both, because, you know, long day. So just kind of quickly going over the Phoenisha savings, because that question had come up as well. The savings from closing Phoenisha were incorporated in the 2425 budget. So we did not need to go up to the tax levy cap, because we had some savings. The key area of savings was transportation. And if you remember, that the same year that we no longer had Phoenisha as an instructional space, we also saw a new contract with First Student that had like a 40% increase. Because of those two things combined, yes, transportation went up, but it did not have to go up as much as it would have, had we had to transport to Phoenisha. Facilities at the lower maintenance and operational expenses, and then the staffing was large, because we had many retirements that we were not, that we did not need to replace. So what would the impact have been if Phoenisha had remained open? Is that the 2425 budget would have been significantly higher. So the savings contributed to managing the costs, optimizing the resources, and that's what contributed to the creating of a budget this year that was under the tax levy limit. Any questions? Okay, next. I believe we did this slide the last time, too. I know we did it at the community forum. But again, just as a reminder, not just how the bond payment is distributed, but how are the taxes that are paid in this district distributed? So they're, they're distributed based on the value, your assessed value. So as I said, as you said earlier, now, building aid in a project picks up 31% of the cost. If there were a cost, then the remainder gets spread out over the property. We have 12,301 parcels that make up this district. But as I mentioned before, the top five taxpayers in the district hold 22% of the property value. So that's of the 6 billion, 1.4 billion is held by those three tax, five taxpayers. So not only would they pay 5% of, or 22% of any debt payments, they also pay 22% of the budget. With the tax levy, sorry.
So since the residents won't see an increase, they won't see an increase-
They won't either, no.
That'll make them happy, right?
But I, you know, I think it's an important slide to show, because this is truly what makes ONTEA unique. When we talk about being a wealthy district, I think people tend to confuse the definition of wealth. You know, our definition of wealth is how much money we have in our 401K, in our savings account. The state sees wealth as what is the value of the land that's in your district. And when you have 280 square miles in your district, it can be, you know, it's very valuable. So I think, no. So just kind of summarizing, with $70 million project, building aid reimbursed at 31%. $53 million of the project costs remain. 22%, or 11.6% would be paid by the top five taxpayers. The remainder would be spread across the others, but due to the consolidation savings, the project is anticipated to have no taxpayer impact. Understanding it truly is the savings from consolidating that's allowing us to, to say that. So we showed this summary the last time as well, but I thought it was kind of good to, to reiterate that initial payments are funded through the current voter-authorized capital reserve. So we are currently, for example, paying our architects for the work that they're doing, and some testing. 2627, we would look to put another proposition to the voters to save additional funds. So if we can save money now, we will save money now. That again, will help reduce how much needs to be borrowed. 2728, we would borrow only as needed using bands, making interest payments, and principal payments if we can, while obviously not affecting the district financially. 2930, converting to a long-term bond for the remaining amount not covered by the cash held in capital reserves, with 3031 being the first year of principal and interest payments. So this phased approach minimizes the borrowing costs, maximizes the cash reserves, and you are kind of, you're keeping your, your state aid kind of consistent with your payments. So you kind of, as money's coming in, it's reducing the money that needs to go out. Questions? So if a project vote, oop, I missed, sorry. Caught me off guard.
No, thank you. It's, certainly, this is efficiently, efficiency. We're back to efficiency on that, that first slide, right? This is all about efficiency. My question is, the side where, I, it always had been explained to me that because we were a wealthy district, because of the, the people paying our taxes, DEP, New York State, et cetera, that we weren't eligible for reimbursement by the state for capital projects. But you're saying that doesn't matter because, or there, much less. Let's say that we were a district that didn't have those assets, then they would be really reimbursing us for the, you know, most of the project cost. Not the case here, but what you're saying is that by closing the other elementary, that that's going to make it so that there's, we don't have to pay anything for the $70 million bond, basically.
Can I just try and clarify what I think you're saying?
Sure, yeah.
Our property wealth is a large determining factor in our building aid percentage. So that 31%, if we were a different district that did not have that property wealth, that percentage would be much higher. There are districts whose building aid percentage is 90%, 75%, 95%. So that, that's the number that's different. Not, not the aidability of the components of the project. Is that clear?
Yeah, I understand that. It's, yes. But, but just to go, so then, it's really just the, the savings involved with the closing of the school that's gonna, that's gonna make it so that it doesn't cost anybody anything?
Correct.
Okay.
So if the project vote passes on May 20th, May 20th, 2025, what would a tentative timeline look like? So I know we've kind of talked about this before, but again, between July of this year, June of next year, we would design the documents, finalize them, based on the faculty, staff, and student feedback and input. We would definitely need that in order to get designs that best meet the needs of our students. We would then send it up to SED, the State Education Department, for review and approval. Once they're returned, that's when the project bidding and award would take place. And as we've said before, just want to reiterate, bids must be at or below the voter-approved amounts. If they aren't, then you can do two things. You can either kind of change things and go back out to bid. Usually, that's what happens, you change things and go back out to bid. Summer of '27, we would look for construction to begin, with September of 2028, construction completed. And if you notice, the difference between this slide and the last one is I kind of took out summer. Because if you were at the community forum, Schoolhouse explained how we could do parts of this project during the school year. Because of the way it's being designed, it's kind of off to the side, which would allow us to separate it, and make sure that, you know, what is needed safety-wise for the students, and still continue with construction, which helps us two ways. It helps us speed up getting the project completed, but it also will help keep the costs down, because it's a, it's a, it's a project that would be much more attractable to contractors, because they will have their people busy for, you know, 16, 18 months, versus how it normally works, which is three months on, nine months off, three months on, nine months off. It's very difficult to find workers that are willing to work those shifts. So, yes.
This just seems incredible to me, that given what I, the, the projects that we've done with SED, like, this projection that this would be finished by 2028, do we really think that's plausible? That seems, we're sitting here in the middle of, of 2025, and we're going to have a, wow, that seems, that seems-
It's absolutely plausible, both by both CPL and Schoolhouse. And, you know, I have history in, in building capital projects, it's very plausible.
Wasn't there, weren't we just waiting for improvements to be made to Bennett after the closing? That didn't happen in time, and it was held up with SED, and it didn't go through, and there was holdups?
We didn't have six months at SED. We had like two months at SED.
Right.
And it didn't make it in two months. So the key is really when it gets approved by SED. If it gets approved past March-
But that's what I'm saying. SED is notorious for not approving in a short timeframe.
But now, but now, their, their times are down, but they've also brought back third-party review because of that. Because they noticed that so many projects were not getting approved in a timely fashion. So, you know, it's, it's literally, you can go on, you can go on to the website, and it will tell you how many weeks a project is in each phase.
Right, no.
So you can tell, you can say, okay, you know what, it's taking longer than we thought. We need to go to third-party review.
Right. No, I just remember that was such a mess.
Because they took away third-party review.
Yeah, okay. I just remember it was a mess.
Oh, it was.
Just as projects often go over financially, I know we can't do that, but if it went over time-wise, even just like into November, just curious what the plan would be for the Woodstock kids, and also, if it didn't get approved, let's say, till November, what's the plan?
Well, I mean, we would have to work, we would have to work on that. I, you know, there, I mean, I, I can't say what the plan would be without, you know, actually looking at, because there are so many variables.
It would also depend on the phasing of the project. So we would work with Schoolhouse Construction to make sure that, I mean, they will look to have certain portions of the project completed in certain timelines. So we would work with them as well, so that it would have minimal disruption for students.
So for example, would you ever move them mid-year, or we're always aiming for September? Like, let's say it was finished, end of October or something?
I think it would depend on what components were being finished when.
Yes.
Did Schoolhouse give us an S, or when will they give us an estimate? If they haven't been able to give us a timeline, I think, to your point. For example, I'm looking at the totality of these, of these construction projects. You know, is there a sense that you would do, you know, buildings first over the summer period, for example? Or, you know, some sort of staggering of them? Has that been made available to us yet, just hypothetically? Or is that something that would come after?
Well, I know we've discussed it, but, you know, we would obviously use their expertise in saying, if they said, you know, you don't want to do the parking lot now because of this, you want to do this first to make sure the kids, I mean, you know, they have multitude of, of talent and experience having done this, so, I'm trying to think, I don't know if we really-
We have not gotten a laid-out work schedule yet. We have discussed hypothetically, for instance, if the fields and the turf could possibly be one of the first things we do, because that could be done, it's on state contract. So we could do that very quickly. But we have not done the, the full work schedule yet. They kind of have to know really finely what they're working with.
And so that we couldn't potentially see until the bids are all in, really, right? And approved, obviously.
And understand that if, if review and, and, you know, approval from SED comes in earlier than we expect, we might be able to do, you know, the fields. You know, there are, there are numerous opportunities.
But the idea, just so we all have a sense of it, we wouldn't know that potential timeline until SED approves. Is that correct?
Yes, exactly. That is-
Okay.
That is the unfortunate thing, we, we do have to wait for SED.
At one point, maybe this was in Facilities Committee, I can't remember, there was talk of possibly considering peeling off some small chunk of this to try to start before 20, summer of 2027, possibly summer of 2026. Is that still in the cards, or is, does the SED process just make that impossible?
It doesn't make it impossible. If it's, for instance, the fields and the track, that might get through quicker. They might be able to, to get portions of it turned around quicker, because the less, you know, some of the, some of the intricate building- you know, some of the, some of the intricate building needs engineering approval, mechanical approval, the fields and the track do not. So...
So the other thing to think of is that, that $70 million does not necessarily mean it's one project. So once the, once, if the voters approve, CPL may say, you know what, I can, we can design the commons and the track inside of a month, get it up to SED right now. And we kind of peel off then that little bit of that $70 million. Then they work on designing this piece, we send that up to SED, that becomes another project. So you can have multiple projects, they don't all have to be approved at SED at the same time, you know? So for example, the security vestibule that we're doing this summer is under the same project, or under the same voter approval at 8.8 million, that with the middle school gym, that was supposed to happen last year. So the, the security vestibule was always supposed to be done this year, even though it was part of the same project as the middle school gym. But then if you remember correctly, we did the, the high school roof, which is also under the same project. So, you know, you can, you can, you know, phase it that way as well. A lot of it does depend on what CPL can design, what they know as far as, some things are more easily approved by SED than other things. That's why they're the experts, not us. Any other questions? Um...
Sure. I think one of the things that we have been trying to really bring into the conversation is the risk that we have been very aware of since last year in terms of our potential loss of foundation aid. And as I said at the forum, and I think it bears repeating, this was not a consideration when we started down this path. When we started this discussion about central campus, there was not a looming risk of losing over $7 million in our annual operating budget. And so now that this is part of the discussion, it is, it is really important to recognize that if, if we were to lose over $7 million for our annual operating budget, that would really force us to make difficult financial decisions. And I believe that we would be forced to consolidate just based on that loss. And from my perspective, being, holding the values of students first and staff forward, fiscally responsible with community, to not plan will leave us in a very, very tenuous position. And we would be doing everything reactionary, and that's just not a good way to plan for the future of our district, for our students, for our community. It would be really, I feel like we would be remiss in our obligations. And we can't, we can't ignore this. Our board leadership went up to Lobby Day, and they were told by multiple of our representatives, we're not losing foundation aid right now, but that is not going away. We should, we should prepare to lose that funding.
So, as a board member, I, I did not want to think about this. It, this, this whole thing is complicated enough without thinking about that. So it's, it's hard, but I guess we have to be fiscally responsible, and rightfully, you, you brought up the issue. So I just want to make sure people understand, the way you put it here is, I, I agree. If we didn't do anything, right, we had no capital improvements, we could potentially save, let's say, $4 million by having Phoenisha and Woodstock close. And we could put that towards, offset the $7 million from the, uh, foundation aid. Is that correct?
I think that's a reasonable estimate, yep.
Yeah. But let's assume we do, this does get approved, and we do build the central campus, and we do take advantage of the savings from closing Woodstock and Phoenisha, then we can't use that savings to offset the foundation aid, correct?
That's correct.
Right.
But we will have, we will already be in a savings situation, and so then we would have to look for how else to become more efficient.
Does, do we have a plan, or some kind of idea?
Well, we don't know where we're gonna be yet, so we can't...
I mean, we have an idea what we'd do if we didn't have a capital improvement, we had a, but, so we, we don't have a, any idea how we would offset $7 million if we, if we approved the capital improvement, correct?
No, not, not exactly, obviously. But I will tell you that again, as we said, you know, based on his, history, where we saved money when we, when we made the changes that we made to the district, last year, if you'll remember, when we started the budget conversation, we were supposed to lose $3 million in foundation aid. So we had a plan. Now, thankfully, that plan did not have to come to fruition, but, you know, we, we thought about it, we already knew where that, where we were gonna get that $3 million. So, again, that's our job.
So I just want to make sure the public understands, just because we build the centralized campus, that's not a fantasy, a silver bullet, that we're gonna save $7 million for the, for the foundation aid.
One of the other things that we don't know is how it will be, how it would be implemented. And we would hope that it would be gradual, and so that we could respond incrementally. That was part of the recommendation in the Rockefeller Report.
Would, would, would we also, I remember the dark days of looking at different ways to save that $3 million, but wouldn't we also be able to then utilize these other reserve accounts?
That is, that is absolutely an option for us, and that would buy us time. Utilizing reserve accounts is not a long-term strategy, it's not a long-term solution, but it would absolutely buy us time so that we could respond appropriately.
One detail that you didn't mention that's been in my mind, and I, I don't know, I wanted to have sort of a more substantial conversation about this foundation aid issue during the structures. Do we want to delay it till then, or do we want to just flesh this out now? Either way, so one detail that I think, I, I've been thinking about this in terms of future risks that aren't necessarily just contained in the numbers. And with foundation aid, the legislatures that you talked to, that you, that you guys talked to were two Republicans, two Democrats, right? So I'm talking about political risk here. And if you look, I, I've been, you know, I've been looking into this for a long time, because it's kind of why I'm sitting here. And there are conservative groups, there's a group called the Citizens Budget Council that is officially nonpartisan, but they're kind of budget hawk conservatives, and they've been jumping up and down about ending, and when we talk about foundation aid, we're really talking about Save Harmless. It's a, it's a, it's a provision that has kept certain districts that have lost a lot of students and gained wealth, kept more money going to them than they should be getting because the Save Harmless provision said you'll never get less than you got last year. That's the, that's the very short explanation. So when I looked at sort of the political landscape about how this Save Harmless issue is discussed around our state, it's really, there's bipartisan agreement. There's the budget hawks like the CBC, then there's our Democratic governor who brought this up and, and suggested just ending it in two years last year, because there's a real equity argument here. You know, foundation aid is, the whole theory behind it was to help schools with lots of kids to educate and economic need, and to make up for their disparity in, of their ability to fund themselves out of property tax, right? So, um, because we're getting more, because we're getting $7 million more than the, of a correct formula that accounted for our wealth and current enrollment, that means another district that has a lot more kids than we do, and a lot more economic need, is getting less than they should be getting, because the formula's out of whack. It's based on the 2000 census. So in terms of our hope that this problem's gonna go away, we can't look to Republicans, we can't look to Democrats. It's a bipartisan agreement. So when it first came into the public discussion, I sort of thought, oh, this is a possibility, maybe they'll lose their nerve. My thinking has evolved, the more I've learned, and the other factor here is that they, the state paid the Rockefeller Institute $2 million to spend a year looking, almost a year looking at this. And they recommend that Save Harmless is out of whack, it needs to be fixed. What works in our favor is that they said you shouldn't do it really fast, you should phase it in over a time. So I've been already composing in my head NISBA resolutions for next summer, saying, you know, how can we convince them to, if, when your Save Harmless is more than 10% of your annual budget, which it is for us, to phase it out quickly would be really devastating for us. But I just think, for me, for, in my, I, I'm viewing this as, as having moved from a possibility to somewhere between a probability and a near certainty. And that really informs my thinking on, on how we're looking forward, I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
I think that's a great point, and I think one of the, when we were discussing this at the community forum, someone said, well, you know, how will other districts handle this? What about Kingston? What, what do they stand to lose? But when you look at a Kingston, it's not that situation. They have been underfunded, so they stand to gain. And so it, it's unfortunate, because it, it actually is an issue that we never want to see. My, my professional organization likes to call it a winners and losers issue, and that's never good when you're pitting districts against each other to vie for funding. But it doesn't affect everybody in the same way. There are districts who have been just systemically underfunded. And we did want to just come back to the idea that we understand that this is a really impactful plan, and that the closure of a school is absolutely a loss, and that our goal would be a calm and well-communited, whoo, sorry, well-communicated and just nurturing transition, moving to one elementary school, and really capturing this opportunity that we have to enhance the central campus for all of our students and all of our families, and have it also serve our community. There was a question at the community forum, and this is certainly a discussion that will continue as we work through this process, about the Woodstock property. We know that the West Hurley property has been under contract for a number of years, we are working through that. A lot of that delay is not related to us, but to the purchaser and the town and the, the issues that they've had. We are in conversation with the Town of Shandaken in terms of the Phoenisha building. We absolutely want that to, as, as best we can. We want it to remain a resource for the community, but at some point, that is sort of out of our hands. But what could be done with the Woodstock property, and it was well noted that there is a deed restriction, and it is listed here. It's that in the event that the property is not used for school purposes and should be sold or conveyed to any other person or corporation, that that deed or conveyance shall contain a covenant provision or restriction, that the property shall thereafter be used only for residential purposes. Our full deed can be found on our website, the link is there in the presentation. You know, to, to try and work through what that could be, when we asked our attorneys a number of years ago, they said, you know, it's a, it is a deed restriction. A purchaser can work through that, there are ways to work through that with towns and planning boards, and that's not my area of expertise, but it is not certainly a, it is not an issue that cannot be worked through by a purchaser, but that's not for us to do. It could be, potentially, that property could be used for housing, it could not be used for a hotel. But there are still options for the property. And one other side note, just to mention, not everybody who lives in the Town of Woodstock is actually an Antioa School District resident. The Town of Woodstock is served by three different school districts, which is sort of unique for us, but you can live in the Town of Woodstock and attend Antioa, Kingston, or Sagerties. So we are dealing with a town that serves multiple constituents. Any questions? So we wanted to address the idea of if this vote does not pass on May 20th, we would have, we will have exit surveys, so we would review those. The options would be then to move forward, choose to do, to not bring up another vote, or we could work to bring up another vote. If we got the proposition to bring forward, the board could approve it in September, and there could be a new vote in November.
So, I'm not familiar with the exit poll. How does that work? I mean, I've voted a few times here in this district. Over the years, I've never seen an exit poll.
There are a couple of different ways it can be done. In many school districts, it's simply a piece of paper that you can fill out and you put like in a ballot box. Just recently, when, I believe when New Paltz did theirs, they actually had BOCs set up Chromebooks, am I correct in that? Yeah. They had BOCs actually set up Chromebooks, and voters could fill out the exit survey, like through Survey Monkey or something like that. So it was like, literally, you vote, you'd go fill out, and you'd leave. So there are a couple of different options. We would more than likely work with BOCs on what would be the best for our community. And then also what questions to ask, seeing as BOCs has done this in the past. So just upcoming dates, if needed, there is a additional board meeting scheduled for Friday. Then March 18th, board meeting at the Middle School, High School auditorium is when the board would be approving propositions that will be added to the ballot for May. You want to go one? Is this me? Okay. So, for anyone who is dropping into this discussion right now, because we know that that's how sometimes people's lives work, we wanted to have this slide here. So anyone who's dropping in now is absolutely encouraged to watch the discussions that took place during the two February Board of Education meetings. Just as a reminder, the discussions have been sort of centered around whether to create one or two propositions. Two propositions have been suggested by some to provide choices, and one proposition would honor the community vision for a central campus design. But just a reminder that regardless of the composition of the proposition or propositions, voting no on the improvements for a central campus is not a guarantee that we would not end up consolidating. A central campus will allow us, as we talked about earlier, to plan intentionally and avoid making reactive decisions in the future if faced with drastic fiscal challenges.
So after the board approves what will be on the ballot, we have a lot of work to do. We need to do messaging and outreach, clearly communicating all of the benefits and impact of the project. We need to address common questions and concerns, providing easy-to-understand materials, and emphasize that every vote matters to shape the future of our community. and emphasize that every vote matters to shape the future of our district. We want to reach as many community members as possible. There are multiple ways to do that. Social media, obviously, website, posts and emails, mailers and flyers, community meetings, looking to get time with our local media and press. There are engagement strategies that are always used for publicizing propositions for our voters. And we really want to have a call to action. I think everybody does. And encourage everyone to mark their calendars, to come out and vote. It's really, really important. And we are happy to engage with any community groups or individual community members. We are reaching out to as many groups as we can. But, if there is anyone who would like to meet with us, we are happy to do so. If there's anyone who has even a small informal social group who would like information, we are happy to go and meet and provide information. That's our last slide for this evening.
I just wanted to thank you both. You really do, the finances for this district are maintained very, very well. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Are there any legal barriers to working or to encouraging the students to be involved and better understand the changes for their campuses and their parents, potentially? It's just, I mean, just informally, I was, you know, skiing with a huge bunch of parents on Sunday, and none of them knew about this. It's like shocking sometimes. But, I'm just curious, like, you know, how we can better inform our own students about the potential changes in their immediate day-to-day, and also engage the parents in a way? Is there any reason why part of this list wouldn't include, you know, roundtables, particularly with the high school students and others who can be ambassadors for the changes that they may want to see?
I think that's not only a very viable opportunity, but I was also thinking that the school newspaper would be a great, a great way to get some of the information out.
Thank you so much. Very, very informative. Thank you for going slow. Really appreciate it. The board would like to acknowledge the public beheard comments from our last meeting. We heard from Daniels Sawain, Gillian Khan Urdia, and Jessica Wisniski. Public and student comment is on our agenda next. The board appreciates hearing from the public, including students, on any agenda or non-agenda item. Please understand that by our adopted parliamentary procedure, the board cannot engage in discussion or answer questions during public beheard. Please know that we hear you and we take your, all your comments into consideration. The board does reserve the right to correct any inaccuracies or misinformation during public beheard. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Be civil, and do not name any particular individuals or promote any commercial ventures or products. People wishing to express individual student or personnel concerns can bring them to the superintendent's attention in private. Phaedra?
Got it? Yes, okay. Hi. I'd like to comment on the structuring of the propositions that you'll be discussing tonight, and specifically, the idea of separating projects that relate to centralizing the elementary schools from those that apply to the middle and high school. I believe this is a misguided suggestion that is potentially harmful to our district and our kids. It's no secret that the idea to separate the propositions in this way comes from opponents of the central campus. People who are trying to stop approval for the Bennett upgrades based on the mistaken idea that if funding is voted down, Woodstock will just stay open and no additional consequences will be felt. Both of these assumptions are simply not true. Any version of the message, keep Woodstock open, tell the board to separate the propositions, ignores what has been explained repeatedly that even if funding for this central campus project does not pass at this time, it is still likely that Woodstock will close. The underlying factors that made this plan necessary are not going away. Our current building usage, transportation, and programming split between two buildings for an elementary population of 400 is highly inefficient, and according to the state, we are overfunded by $7 million. Our administration has been telling us that if we don't plan for this now, something will have to give, and it is highly likely that Woodstock will close anyway. If anyone out there is thinking that it's worth the risk, and I know you are, remember that in that situation, we, including your kids, will not have the benefit of an upgraded campus with more classrooms, new music rooms, and everything else we've seen in these presentations to move to. This is the outcome on the table where the educational experience for all our kids will suffer. This is the outcome that people trying to vote down a central campus funding proposition are simply not acknowledging. Secondly, this vote is not meant to be a referendum. Yes, parents have strong opinions, and we should be able to express them. I have two little ones that I advocate for what I believe to be in their best interest too. But, we need to have the humility to appreciate that we are talking about a public school system with finite resources, serving a large rural district, with families and students of dramatically diverse needs. I wish I could read that five times, but I'm already speeding through. I know that I cannot possibly fully appreciate the specific needs or challenges faced by many families outside of my own circles. Our administrators do know what this looks like in practice from working with the teachers and kids and families every day. This is why we elect school board members and entrust them with the responsibility to make decisions that create the best possible K-12 educational experience in as equitable a way as possible for all students. Further, regardless of where you land on this current issue, think about what a dangerous precedent it would send for a public school district if any vocal group of parents were allowed to cherry pick specific budgeting decisions, and in cases like this, essentially use obstruction as a way of exerting their preferences every time a district-wide project needed approval. Especially considering the current political climate and what we see happening in other schools around the country. This becomes a slippery slope, I hope we can all agree, leads to no good end. Please continue to keep equity and the collective good in mind and help us move forward together. Thank you.
Thank you, Phaedra. Tanzi?
My name is Tanzi Michaud, and I'm the parent of a future Antiora student. Tonight, you are making a decision that will directly impact taxpayers' ability to vote fairly in May. I urge the board to separate the bond propositions into two distinct votes. One for middle school, high school renovations, and one for Bennett expansion and closure of Woodstock. These are major decisions that will affect families, students, and the town of Woodstock. By bundling them together, you are forcing voters into an all-or-nothing choice instead of allowing them to express their true preferences. The district has cited that declining enrollment is a key reason for closing Woodstock Elementary. However, your own enrollment projections, published in January, show K-5 stabilization and growth through 2028 and 2029. Dr. Buckman's 2019 enrollment study states, "One of the key drivers of student enrollment is the size of the incoming kindergarten class. Stable or growing kindergarten classes suggest a long-term stable or increasing enrollment." If kindergarten size is a key indicator, then why is the district dismissing K-5 growth projections? This data contradicts the argument for closing a school. The community deserves an explanation. Another reason cited for closing Woodstock Elementary is the possibility of losing foundation aid. The district has presented information suggesting Antiora could lose $7.3 million of its $7.9 million in state funding. This concerned me, so I reached out to Assembly member Sarah Hana Srasta and Senate Education Committee Chair Shelley Mayer. Both confirmed that all school districts should assume that Save Harmless provision will remain in place because removing it would be catastrophic statewide. In fact, they sent me the 2025 and 2026 state aid projections, which show Antiora receiving a 2% increase in foundation aid next year. This directly contradicts the district's claim that the drastic funding cuts are imminent. It seems as though this district is using unfounded funding concerns as a scare tactic to justify closing Woodstock Elementary, pressuring the community into thinking closure is inevitable when the financial outlook does not support that claim. Tonight, I am also delivering petition signatures from community members that have gathered just in the past 24 hours. These signatures represent residents whose voices deserve to be heard and want to vote on two separate propositions in May. I urge the board to separate the bond propositions, address the discrepancy between enrollment projections and the closure decision, clarify the district's misassumption about foundation aid. The community deserves transparency, fairness, and accurate information before a decision of this magnitude is made. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanzi. Stephanie?
Hi, everybody. Stephanie Bryant, resident of Woodstock. It's good to see you all. I've missed you. I've been working in the city, and that's kept me from coming here. I had prepared comments in my head that I was gonna say, but my brain is a bit broken wonderfully, surprisingly, with the information I've just received. And I'm not a financial analyst, obviously. And I just want to thank you for your work. I want to thank you for your service. I hope that the timing of all of these foundational things goes according to the schedule so that what we all saw today works. Because that would be, that would really be something. So, like I said, my brain is breaking with all of this. I don't understand how it works. I work a lot to afford a mortgage in Woodstock. And if my taxes were to be increased, that would be bad news bears for the brains. So, and I know I'm not alone in that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Sierra?
My name is Sierra Smith. I am a parent in the Antiora School District who has been on quite a journey with this district. I first learned in 2011 that we were facing drastic enrollment decline. Having spoken with many residents, past board members, and dedicated Antiora staff, I have learned that the journey started long before my family came on board. Nearly a decade before 2011, enrollment projections indicated we would need to begin to work proactively to consolidate to a central campus. Rather than face this need to consolidate, the district restructured to the Princeton Plan in 2012. My youngest child was entering kindergarten at that time. We thought he would join his older sister in school, but due to restructuring, siblings were divided. Kids were bused past their home school to help fill emptying buildings, and many hamlets were split between two elementary schools at either end of the district. All of this shuffling of children and divvying up small communities was to save buildings. Today, kids who live as close or closer to our central campus are still detached from their immediate community peers and sent to Woodstock Elementary School at the easternmost end of the district. Without splitting off these kids, the building would not be filled enough to justify operation. Even so, we have two elementary schools at a fraction of their capacity. At a recent meeting, a board member stated that Woodstock is well-attended. By what standard? Both of our elementary schools are nearly half-empty, and year over year, elementary boundaries are shifted and kids are shuffled to maintain a balancing act that we cannot continue to maintain. Time and time again throughout the years, needless division and re-division of kids is somehow deemed virtuous as an effort to save buildings. Our central campus held over 1,500 students in the year 2000, with the district enrollment over 2,100. We are now just over 1,000 in the entire district. For anyone saying any of our buildings are well-attended, for a board member to say such a thing, please stop kidding yourself. This is deceiving to our residents, especially to those who are new to the community and who we are welcoming on this journey. It isn't fair to them to be deceived as to what our long history has been and how we have arrived at an overdue need to consolidate. I would like to thank the board for their dedication to each student of Antiora, kindergarten through 12, in all 25 villages and hamlets throughout the vast district. Yes, 25, individual zip codes, all needing to be served equally. We need a board with the courage to acknowledge an entire district, to see each and every student and what will serve them best as a whole. We have recent voices in our community calling for division of capital improvement projects at the central campus. They are clearly stating they view this as a referendum to avoid consolidation. Unfortunately, I can't finish the rest.
Sierra, will you be willing to give that to our district clerk and we can finish reading it later? Thank you very much. Pam Parker?
Hello. Hi, my name's Pamela Parker. I am mom of a future Woodstock Elementary student. Had the pleasure of going on a tour of the school recently, seeing the full classrooms and the very thriving elementary school that I moved to this region to attend, to send my daughter to. I heard you guys at the top talk about your sort of organizing principle of working with the community and, yeah, incorporating the priorities of the community. And I feel strongly that, you know, if you really want to listen to the community, the community is asking to split this proposition and have a voice in the future of the district and in the ability to kind of split these much-approved capital improvements from the decision about closing a thriving elementary school with a history with people who are not, you know, how did you term it? It was spoken about in terms of like unnecessary costs, to hear that. And the presentation was really disappointing. So, yeah, I asked that you separate the vote propositions on the closure of Woodstock Elementary and let the people of this district have their say in the future. And thank you for your service on the board.
Thank you, Pam. Are there any other folks that are interested in speaking tonight? All right. Well, thank you all very much for speaking to us. So, we are moving on to continue our discussion on the structure of the capital improvement proposition or propositions for our May 20th, 2025 vote. And I actually prepared a statement. I want to just give you a little perspective. If you don't know me, I am retired from Antiora. I was the Director of People Personnel Services when I worked here, and I retired in June of 2021 and immediately assumed my position on the school board after that. So, my statement is from the perspective of when I was an administrator and what that was like, and my hopes for the future moving forward. As a People Personnel Services Administrator in Antiora, serving for a period of almost 10 years, I supervised all special education programming and staff, including OT, PT, teacher of the deaf and hearing impaired, speech-language pathologists, school psychologists, and social workers, all English-as-a-new-language teacher, teachers, and academic intervention services staff. Year after year, I was faced with juggling staff and programs, especially self-contained student, self-contained education classes, to meet the ever-shifting enrollment in our two small K-3 buildings. There were times when special classes mandated by state ed to have no more than 12 students would have as few as three or four students enrolled for the year. For entire years, handfuls of students would spend each day receiving the most restrictive programming I've ever experienced because we were forced to maintain two small K-3 buildings. We had full-time special education teachers and related service providers driving midday from one school to another, whether their caseload could be, where their student caseload could be as low as two or three students per grade level. Our students with special needs were bused all over the district, often having to change schools mid-year when their programming needs changed. We bused our K- We bused our K-three E-N-L students who lived all over the district to Phoenisha to conserve staffing and balance enrollment. The first kindergarten class I supported in Antiora is graduating from high school this year. It is a large class by our standards with one hundred eight students enrolled. This year's kindergarten class has seventy-two students. A Cornell University study predicts that New York State's population could drop by over thirteen percent by 2050 due to low fertility rates and aging. These are facts. All our schools hold a fraction of the students they once held. Our schools are old, built in the nineteen-fifties and sixties, and need upgrading. To provide the necessary support and services and offer excellent programming for our students, we still maintain two full elementary faculties and staff in two buildings separated by just twelve miles. Many of our elementary staff still travel between two buildings to support their students, losing precious instructional time, just like they did in the 2011-2012 school year when I first came to Antiora. Our current elementary student-to-staff ratio is five-point-five students to one professional staff. That's five and a half students to every one professional staff. Woodstock Day School's website states that their current private school student-to-staff ratio is fourteen to one. This model is unsustainable. It does not provide our students with the equitable educational experience they deserve. We have a great opportunity to bring all our students together on one campus, which will be enhanced by our community's shared vision. From new and improved classrooms to a new K-12 gym, enhanced music rooms, improvements to our middle school auditorium, and incredible improvements to our current football field and track. We can do all of this at no additional expense to our taxpayers by incorporating the savings made by closing the Phoenisha and Woodstock schools into our budgets over the life of our bond. I am not willing to gamble at our elementary students' expense on how drastically or exactly when New York State Foundation aid will be reduced or cut from our district. I take my role as a school board trustee in a public school district very seriously. I was elected to serve all the students in all the towns and villages and all the taxpayers district-wide. I believe in careful fiscal planning and providing the best possible programming in a sustainable and inclusive school setting. For all of those reasons, I support one proposition that includes improvements to a beautiful, sustainable, and unified K-12 central campus. Thank you. Trustees, I'm sure you all have, you know, your own statements, and I'm interested in hearing from you all. Trustee Jerome?
Thank you, trustee Bishop. I think that I would be satisfied to leave this in the hands of the voters. In fact, I think my position on the matter is pretty clear. But I certainly do hear all the very plain-sense arguments that you're making. My concern is that there's a lot of other constituents besides students and the parents of students in our district. There's older people, but the presentation tonight definitely changes that lens. But given that, I think the community will decide. So, I could support the one proposition and let the vote happen.
Thank you. Trustee Kadutson?
Just want to acknowledge there's a lot of emotion in the room tonight. This is a very emotional topic, and it's emotional for me too. You know, I have come around, I have gone through various phases of grief in terms of not just about what the school situation is, but just that our communities no longer have the numbers of children around that they used to. And nobody would like more, nobody would like more than me to see our towns filled with children. But we have to confront what actually is happening. But, so, I just wanted to acknowledge emotion because I'm gonna get into some numbers now here, and I just wanted to say that it's not all about numbers for me, but I do think there's an aspect of this that we haven't highlighted. And so, we definitely received a bunch of emails that said, "Please split these propositions into elementary school and everything else," right? And so, I think what we, if we were to put that before the voters, I think we have to game out a little bit what might happen if the folks who want to vote down the Bennett improvements succeed in that endeavor, yet the other stuff, which those same people have been saying publicly that they support, like, you know, there's all this other stuff we want to vote for, and we just want to stop Woodstock, we think we can stop Woodstock from closing by voting against this other stuff. So, what we have to realize is the reason that the capital project as a whole had no taxpayer impact is because savings would start immediately, right? As soon as we transitioned to one school. We're running six or seven fewer buses a day, et cetera, et cetera. We've been through all that. But we still have to pay for all the stuff in the other half that presumably could get approved. So, I ran the numbers this morning. I sent around a spreadsheet to all the trustees. I don't know if you got the email, but if we were, in fact, to split it into a Bennett and high school, and only the high school passed, we would go from a posture where taxes, if we passed the whole project, we saw taxes go up a teeny bit and then start going down. Or the amount we need to levy in taxes, I shouldn't say that because the amount we need to levy in taxes to cover the project would slowly start going down. If we just passed the other stuff and did not realize any savings because Woodstock did not close, we would be looking at tax increases locked in every year for the next twenty years to cover the football, the field and the track and the science rooms and everything else that everybody else, that people say they support. And my wife is a chartered financial analyst, and she did a little regression from the, there was from the financial analyst, and she thought it would be something, just to pay for the stuff that might get approved while not realizing savings, that would be for a $400,000 house, three-hundred-eighty, three-forty to three-eighty increase every year for twenty years. So, and the reason I say this is because we talk so much about, you know, the cost of doing the project, but we have to think about the cost of not doing the project. And the other thing I'll just point out is that if we don't do anything to Bennett, then we're in a situation where our elementary buildings, we'd have two of them, and they would not have been improved. We would do improvements on the high school and middle school, but our seventy-year-old elementary buildings would be, we'd be basically back into, correct me if I'm wrong, superintendent, we'd be back into sort of patch and maintain mode. We, and so, I think you have to consider, you know, all that. And so, for that reason, so, and the reason I was harping on foundation aid a little earlier is that we are gonna have, I feel like, with all due respect to the letters that got written to the representatives, politicians will put up a good face. "We saved your foundation aid this year." But it's so inequitable, it's so bipartisan, the opinion that it needs to be adjusted, I really feel like it's gonna happen. And so, the reason I'm also in support of one proposition, and the reason for that is I feel like it would be irresponsible, fiscally and ethically irresponsible of me to create a structure that would put us in a tax-raising posture going into foundation aid reductions in revenue. In other words, if we passed all the high school stuff and did not realize any savings from closing Woodstock, we're building an even bigger hole to dig out of when those revenue reductions start coming. And I hope they come slowly over a long period of time. But this is our opportunity now, while, before they come, while we still have the foundation aid, to move into sort of a better situation. And so, for that reason, I support one proposition. Thank you.
Trustee Armando?
I also prepared a statement because I get nervous. I want to reiterate that no one here takes this decision lightly, and it's important to recognize that this is an ongoing process and discussion over many years. Since we began the process of district consolidation, our responsibilities have included assessing the need for change, engaging with the community and stakeholders, and creating a clear plan for implementation. This has involved numerous presentations, forums, and discussions focused on managing financial resources, addressing transportation and staffing needs, and maintaining educational equity and quality for all of our students. Throughout, the board has prioritized transparent, consistent, and thoughtful communication, which has helped guide those who have engaged with the process, leading us to this point. We have and will continue to consider the impacts on students and staff and understand the importance of supporting emotional, supporting people through transitions that we acknowledge are difficult and emotional. We've learned valuable lessons from past experiences, such as integrating Phoenisha students and staff into Bennett and moving sixth graders to the middle school. Those moments taught us what worked well and where we can improve going forward. We are at a pivotal moment in Antiora's history, and it's important to remember that this district isn't just one town. As board members, we are entrusted with making decisions that impact everyone we serve. Children from Shandaken, Olive, Woodstock, Hurley, Marble Town, and Lexington comprise our student body. Our role is to make decisions based on the best interests of all of our stakeholders, not just for today, but to ensure that Antiora's Central School District thrives for future generations to come. I fully support one proposition that creates a unified 21st century, student-first, staff-forward, fiscally responsible, community-minded central campus that has zero tax impact on our taxpayers. Thank you.
Trustee Goodrich, then trustee Lynch?
So, we've heard a lot of, over the last year, we've heard a lot from the public, and that's great. I think it's great that people come here and they express how they feel. It's so important. I've always encouraged my neighbors to come out and voice your concerns. Recently, we've gotten a lot of emails, and those are good. We read them, and we take them into consideration. It's really important. One of the things you may not know, especially if you're a new parent here, is that we've recently, well, probably over ten years, we've spent a lot of money renovating the classrooms in the middle school, high school, but we haven't done it in the elementary buildings. Is that correct? We've avoided that because we don't know what we're doing. We've kicked the can down the hallway because we know we gotta change something, but we really weren't sure what we're gonna change. And if we don't approve the central K-through-five at Bennett, we're gonna just keep kicking that can down the road because we're not gonna, who wants to, what board member wants to spend a lot of money in Woodstock if we might close it? It's hard, and these are hard decisions, as trustee, you know, Megan said. You know, we don't take this lightly. And so, we're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place. We want to upgrade those classrooms. We want to provide modern classrooms. I mean, some of these classrooms, they're nice, but they're kind of vintage. They look nice in a museum. You should see our science classrooms. They're from the nineteen-fifties. You know, we need something more modern. And do you want to be the parent that says, "No", and then your child is stuck in a classroom that's, that looks like something from nineteen-fifties? You gotta really think about your decision here. And you have to be an informed voter. My wife, Joy, and I, we had our first child in nineteen-seventy-eight in September, and we were living in another town, German town. And like new parents with a new home that we just bought, we were concerned about taxes. So, we were planning on voting on the school budget when we returned home, and at the last minute, we said, "Nah, we're kind of tired." You know, our plan was to vote the budget down without being informed, no information whatsoever. And pretty bad plan, but that was what we were gonna do. So, at the last minute, we said, "Nah, we're tired. You know, we got a newborn, and we're gonna go home. We're not gonna vote." The next day, that budget passed by one vote. We would have made a decision to vote that budget down without any information. And I'm glad we didn't vote, you know, because that would have been the wrong thing to do. So, I look at this as two budgets, you know, two things. All right, so you've got the middle school, high school, you've got six-through-twelve, and then you've got the central campus, K-through-five at Bennett. And I think everybody would agree on upgrading, you know, doing the central campus if we could just agree on the location. And that seems kind of silly. Why should we penalize those K-through-five students? Because the adults in this district can't agree on the location, right? It just seems silly to me. And I don't want to be the person that says, "We can't have an upgraded classroom for the K-through-five, but we're gonna do upgrades for the six-through-twelve." It just seems wrong to me. So, I'm gonna end with a little story about a guy by the name of Harry Parker. Not Harry Potter, Harry Parker. Harry Parker was a fifty-year coach for Harvard. He coached Harvard rowing. And they always competed against Yale, and they didn't lose against Yale. Now, Harry, as he was known, was also known as God by his, the people that rode for him. Harry, I think he produced fifty-six Olympians, and he was interviewed by Sixty Minutes, and you can still watch it, and it was done in 2013. Harry's no longer with us. And they asked him, "Can you teach winning?" And he said, "No." The winning is within the person, but you can provide an environment to get that out of them, but you can't teach it. So, we need to provide an environment for our students to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you. I actually have a question, but then I'm happy to share my thoughts as others are. I just have a question about propositions and how they work generally. But if we have, you know, two or three or five, does that mean that they necessarily have to be, you have to pass the first one to pass the second, and the second one to pass the third? Is there that, does that apply? Or can you, as you were suggesting, you know, vote for one or the other? And whatever one has the most votes will pass?
That is entirely to be determined by the board in how you structure it. But here's, that was a great introduction because there, I learned something yesterday in a discussion with one of the representatives from our construction management firm who said, "Oh, I really wanted to share with you this one thing that should be considered by the board when determining whether to do one proposition or two, if that's the decision to be made." If you split the project... If you split the project into two propositions, even if they both pass, your fiscal flexibility is severely constrained." So he said, at this time, he's got an issue in another district that actually had this happen. If you have one proposition for all of the work, all of the money is included under that umbrella of that one proposition. If you have four bids that come in under the budget and one that comes in over the budget, you can remain within your budget and award all five of them. If you have two propositions and you have that same situation, you're dead in the water on the one side because the money can't flow between propositions. So it, having one proposition allows for much more flexibility and the ability to be responsive to the bidding environment.
Thank you. That's helpful. I just wanna thank Ms. Michaud and other neighbors who have been so diligent in getting engaged in this conversation. I remember myself, you know, as a new parent in the kindergarten PTA at Phoenisha asking about, I think it was a kiln that we needed for the art room. And I was like, "Yeah, let's get the kiln for the kids." And I was like all excited as I get, as you know. And one of the parents and, and one of the administrators then, neither of which are involved anymore, but we're just sort of like, "Listen, they're gonna close the school. You're not gonna get anything." And I was like, "What?" That was the first time I'd ever heard that, ever. And I was a brand-new kindergarten mom with all of this exciting, you know, passion for the school. And what's tragic about this whole situation is what my bigger point, and what's so emotional, is that parents who understandably have not been in the conversation are the most impacted. And that is just unfair, and I'm sorry because I've been there. And I, and I feel really strongly about this. I did a ton of research when I became a board member on this topic. And frankly, it's a national issue between what's good for our kids, community schools or centralized campus. I went to the Brookings Institute. I used to live in Washington DC. I asked researchers about this. I've done a ton of research behind it. It's actually a national discussion. It's not just an Antioch discussion. There are pros and cons to both. And I, you know, was very, you know, um, new to the discussion as a new board member and was forced to make a decision in May of 2023, but the decision was made. I lost the vote. Like, we, we decided to centralize the campus. So I don't think that there's much more that we can do now except get that energy into what could be a really cool central campus, right? Recognizing the problems certainly of, that are now very clear and recognizing that there's no financial impact. It doesn't feel like it's, you know, much of a question anymore in terms of, you know, how do we, um, move forward? I just think that it's really important that we bring along our, our newest parents and our community members in a way that is thoughtful because I, you know, it, what stops us from having these community dialogues in the Woodstock Elementary School, some of these parents don't know this is happening. They don't even know it's happening. And some of the letters we got are from people who have three and four-year-olds who haven't even gone into the school yet. How do we not, you know, reach, how can we reach these people in a way that's really thoughtful? Um, and so that people aren't surprised when we've been having a conversation since 2001, right? It's been over 20 years. I think that's part of the bigger issue here, which is obviously more about communication. Imagine if we had a, an apparent square where we could be sharing this real-time dialogue where the videos are popping up in your phone, where people can understand that this is what the conversation is, and we'll have more than 40 people at a community forum. You know, it's just really important, I think, that we really focus on how we communicate with our, with our neighbors and, and to honor their, their very real, new exposure to this issue. It's, it's very hard to, to understand, but as you've gone through it and you start to see, again, the rationale, there was also an ad hoc committee, uh, that was, um, spent an inordinate amount of time doing an inordinate amount of research on, you know, all of these issues. And at the end of the day, when you come back to the, the conversations I had with the Brookings Institute and others, they said, "It's so, it's, it's all about how it will impact your specific school, uh, your specific community, and the challenges that we have to do that sort of cost-benefit analysis." And that's what the ad hoc committee tried to do, right? It was to be really thoughtful about the, the mileage that we're covering in transportation, the numbers of kids with, that are classified or have special needs, the numbers of staffing, the, all of those different numbers that are specific to our school, and the decision was made. So with all of the, the thought, you know, that goes into that, part of why I was, um, against that vote in the beginning was not about the idea of centralizing. That, that was made very clear, and I said that at the time. My concern, so folks know for transparency, was I didn't, I didn't think that the way the resolution was written was fair, how it was presented was fair, nor how the implementation plan was laid out was fair, including that Phoenisha got closed first and Phoenisha was gonna get closed in three years. That's not, that's hard for a community to, to implement, and so that's part of the extending the pain that we're feeling today. So I just wanna be very transparent about that. I've always understood the rationale for this district of why we should centralize. And, um, and I will say, because as a parent of kids who have, all three have had to move this year, they're all in new schools. I am, you know, very grateful for, um, the transition and the care that has gone into their, each of their classes' needs, and they've all been different. But there's, you know, a real understanding and openness now from, from teachers and, and, and the administration to listen to those needs, as varied as they are, and try to help support the kids. It is very much, I, I firmly feel it's been a, a student-first, um, transition. Thanks.
No, it's fine. I can, um, I guess, um, just wanna open it up by saying, like, I know there is a lot of divisiveness, but one thing is just like, we secretly all get along and we secretly agree on like 95% of things. And like, I read about other boards all over the country and how deeply disaligned they are on everything from, you know, I don't even wanna get into it, but, you know, so I just sort of wanna say that just to make the point that this is what everyone's seeing, but like, there's so much we're getting done every day that is so positive, and we really are aligned and on the same page about so much. And I am willing to vote for one proposition. I think, you know, that's one way to leave it up to the voters. I'll just kinda make the argument for two since nobody is, but I'll support, you know, I'll go the way you guys go. You know, I sort of see like we almost already have a central campus, you know. Obviously, we've centralized so much, you know, 75% of the way, you could say. And I almost see Woodstock as like this annex in the most densely populated part that is like an advertisement for our district. So when people visit from the city for the weekend, they see it and they say, "Ooh, wouldn't this be a nice place to live?" You know, like, and you know, my concern is tied so deeply with enrollment and just the communities I'm a part of, they really do threaten to leave when we say we're gonna close and have left or haven't enrolled. And, you know, coming from where I am, that's so scary to see, that they will, you know, some people will abandon us if they don't have this community school. The other part that's hard is that the district, yes, that is our concern as a board, but it, it doesn't exist in a vacuum. So it's very hard for me to not be super concerned about the town, about the community. So it's just like, you know, they just weighs very heavily on me. And it's just like, I can't separate it 100% just because I'm a human person who also happened to have grown up in this town, which only further complicates it. I think those were my main points. Yeah, I mean, it's just, I'm just so scared that this is the wrong decision and there's no way to go back. I see all the points. It's just, you know, it is very frightening to me. But I do think even, and oh, this was the other argument for two propositions, is that I thought that would be a way almost to heal the divisiveness because let's say they both pass. It's like, you know what? We, we asked you and it went through. But first of all, I think it would like, the capital improvements more generally would sail through. But like, let's say they both pass and it's like, it's, it would be almost healing because it's like, a lot of the May 2023 vote didn't sit right with people. And this is like, "Well, okay, fine. We'll leave it up to you, and then if it passes, please, you can never say anything again." You know, like, I think there, there, there is an argument for that. And, um, but I also think that could be said of the one proposition. So it's like, you know, hopefully it passes. I do have some concerns about that too. Again, just because of how densely populated the area where this school's closing will. Even though if they're not, I understand they're not inexplicably linked. It just does come off that way a little. And was that all I wanted to say? I think so.
Trustee Goodrich.
So I, I agree with, uh, Trustee Mitchell Merrill. I mean, it's, it's tough, but hopefully, you know, we do agree. And I think it's, it, it's important to, to be unified, not just us, but we got all these towns and villages. You know, it's, we, we need to be together on this. So, uh, our superintendent just gave us some new information, which was very useful. And, um, I was gonna ask one more question along those lines. My understanding is if we have a bigger project, let's say you have a $70 million project versus a $35 million project, you're gonna get more contractors that are gonna submit bids, correct?
You will attract more contractors who will want the work.
And hopefully, these won't be small contractors. They'll be big contractors, which probably do better quality work, I would think.
Oh, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna assume a smaller contractor is not gonna do quality work. I think that would maybe not sit well with a lot of small contractors.
Yeah, thank you. But yeah, I would just, it's just my gut feel, right? But I, I do worry about that. You know, we have to go with the lowest bidder. And, um, if we can get a better, um, better quality of general contractors to bid on this, I, I think it would, I think it would be good. So, yeah, those, those are my biggest concerns. And I, and I agree with Trustee Mitchell Merrill. You know, we can do one proposition and, um, bond vote, and we'll see what happens. And we'll do the exit polling, and we'll see where it goes from there, right? But I think all the students, K through 12, deserve upgrades, right? And I didn't see any reason to make the supplemental part a separate proposition. Like I said, we, we got firsthand experience on why the, um, multi-use turf field, I mean, uh, is, is, is useful. And from a safety perspective, right? You don't wanna have sport, teams running around with, uh, big ruts in the, uh, in the, in the turf. And you can run one athletic event for one sport, and immediately when that's over, immediately turn right around and run for the, the next one. And because the lines are permanent on those fields, they don't have to be relined. So you, you'd get a lot of mind, with the lighting, we could, we could run all night. Thank you.
Trustee Knudsen.
And I just wanted to interject, uh, as, as Trustee Hemmingway Lynch said eloquently at the last meeting, having a nice field that has lights that you can, kids can go kick a ball in late October after four o'clock or whatever, that's also an advertisement for our district, right? That's also going to attract, because that's something that smaller schools in our area can't offer, right? Is, uh, bigger time athletic teams, and that's, that's one of the things that sets us apart. So I've come around to, uh, believing that that should also just be part of the whole package. It's, it's, um, it's important that we're not just avoiding, you know, budget problems, but we're also moving towards something really positive for our students and our families. And I, I do also just wanna circle back to the, um, academic, social, emotional benefits, I feel that are very real about bringing the elementary cohort, which for our district is smaller than the average elementary school in the state, I believe. I think the average elementary school's like 550 kids or something in New York State. And we have currently about 430. I think we're supposed to go down to about 420. And, um, I'm gonna make a little plug for, uh, this book again. I, I recommend any parents in the audience read this book. And the reason I'm bringing it up right now is because one of the themes of this book, this is about sort of the effect of tech and social media on mental health of our kids, is that, um, the tech industry has a sort of, uh, big money interest in getting our kids isolated from each other. The tech industry makes more money when our kids are in their rooms on their phones. And, uh, I won't spoil the end of the book, but Mr. Height's, um, recommendations are that the antidote for that is kids playing outside together more and being off their screens. We've gone from a play-based childhood to a screen-based childhood largely in our society. And so the idea of a 420 kid elementary school with a big playground, that they can go out and play together and have all those, access to all those peers that they will be separated from for five years if we keep two elementary schools, or half of them. They'll, they'll be separated from half of them. The idea of all of them together, I think, will show benefits for our kids' mental health, our kids' general wellness, and that's really important to me, so I just wanted to mention that.
Trustee Ramondo.
So based on this evening's updated presentation and all of this thoughtful, truly thoughtful conversation, which I'm so grateful for with all of you, I would like to make a motion to put one proposition on the ballot for our May 20th, 2025 vote.
Does this mean we don't have to meet Friday?
What was that?
I said, "Does this mean we don't have to meet Friday?"
Yeah. Trustee Goodrich.
I would like to add that, uh, I liked Trustee Knudsen's, um, numbers there where he talked about what it would.
Trustee Goodrich, I just wanna stop you for one second because we have a motion on the floor. So, um, I would ask for a second and then I'll open it back up for discussion. Okay? All right. May I have a second? Trustee Goodrich? Is there any questions or comments?
So I would like to say that we should provide the information that, uh, Trustee Knudsen brought up where if we did not do the central campus and we did not have the savings from, um, Phoenisha and Woodstock, and we just did the middle school, high school upgrades, that it would cost X number of dollars. It wouldn't, our, our taxes would go up. So I'd like to see that number added into the information that's provided.
Any other questions or comments? Yes.
Are we also, I know we talked about having lawyers draft the actual proposition language, but can we have that conversation at some point too? Or when do we have that conversation? Because I think the actual words are very important.
And who does it first? We write it and they do it, or they write it and we fix it?
No, it's, it's very much a legal resolution. Um, you really can't change it. It needs to encompass all the work that we're gonna do in their specific language that's in it. We do have a draft that we've received from bond counsel. I have sent it to our, um, construction manager and our architect to make sure that, that he didn't miss anything as far as work. So I should probably. Um, so I should probably have the next draft back by Friday, I would think, so.
Then, uh, do you distribute that to the board? Or do we do, do we do that in, in the next meeting?
Um, I won't be here on Friday, but Assistant Superintendent Leclerc could provide it to our district clerk and she could send it out in lieu of a Friday update.
Uh, trustee Knudsen?
Uh, I'm not sure, because we're using different words, I want to make sure we're all clear on what we're talking about. So you're talking about the resolution that the board would pass to put these propositions on the ballot. And I wonder if trustee Hemingway Lynch, you're talking about the words that appear on the ballot in May. Are they the exact same thing? Or are they two different things?
That is what the board will have to approve.
So the resolution encompasses the language of the proposition that will be specifically listed on the ballot.
Okay. So it's the same. So what, what we would be approving, when we approve the resolution, that determines the wording on the ballot in May?
Correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Leclerc, when you circu, when the clerk circulates that potential resolution draft, would there be an opportunity to make a recommendation and agenda setting that there's time to discuss it? Because I recognize then we have to vote on it so it can be done on March 18th.
Well, there would be, are you asking for there to be time on the agenda on March 18th to discuss it?
Right. But, um, we had talked about potentially even inviting the lawyers to that meeting because we would have to, we have it rewritten potentially. I don't expect we would, but I'm just trying to think ahead so that we have everything we need in place. Um, the, the reason I'm asking is that I think it's quite important, while obviously it's going to be quite a lengthy proposition, for all of this work to be done. Um, so no one needs to add more words, but just the idea that, um, you know, there's certain things that people who, again, who are coming to this for the very first time, or have been uninformed or not along for the entire journey, would need to see or understand what they're voting for. And I just would think that we might have a point of view on that.
I would suggest that that might be part of, you can think of that as part of our responsibility in the communication of the proposition. It, they're going to want it to be very specific in terms of the work that needs to be done and the funding for it. But just like when you go to the polls in November, sometimes those propositions, it's, they're long and they're legal. And so that's our responsibility to bring that out to the community and to really explain what's in it.
I mean, I guess the hope would be by the time the voters got to the polls, they know what proposition two is. They know what they're voting on. And really, the words are just, as Superintendent, you know, McLaren said, the words are just what the, the legal requirements are to, to be said.
Thank you. That's helpful. Trustee Goodrich.
So, so what the voters see on the ballot is going to be probably a short summary? And would those words be done before, after, the same time as the legal?
So you would be voting on those words on the 18th, and then they would go into the legal notice?
Can I clarify what you were asking? Cause it sounded to me as if you were asking if the voters see on the ballot just a summary of all the legalese, they will see the actual legal proposition, not the summary. There will not be a summary. It, it will be the legal proposition that encompasses all the work that we need to do and the funding. I just want to make sure I'm answering your question.
Yeah, that, that helps. I, I just was kind of surprised because that's going to be pretty long, I would imagine.
Yes. So that it is, it is incumbent upon us to communicate as frequently and effectively and clearly to as many people as possible.
Trustee Knudsen.
That was going to be my comment, is that I view our remit as a group, as all of us, the board, is to go out into the community between March and May and do that translation and do that. And to go out with a, with a unified, um, explanation of factually, this is what this means. All the, all the little details that get missed, um, as, as we said, people are coming to this new, it's a lot of information. And I think it's up to us to identify what the key pieces of information are and make sure that they are, we give the public every opportunity to, to learn and understand what they're voting for. Because our enemy, the enemy of this whole process, I feel, is lack of understanding.
Just as an update, um, Holly Brooker, who is our BOSI's, um, communications leader, uh, she and I already had, we had scheduled a meeting to talk about this on Friday of this week. She unfortunately has jury duty this week and next week, so we have a, um, schedule for the week of March 17th. So hopefully, as soon as we can, we will hit the ground running. And she has so much experience in doing this with, this process with districts throughout the county and actually through other counties as well.
I, I, obviously the price needs to be in the proposition so people know what they're voting for. Does it also, in the proposition, is it, is it typical that you would also talk about the, the zero tax impact? So for example, the, the description that a voter will see is about the work itself. I remember when we've passed these before, right? So you're, you can see all of the upgrades and changes and work, the work that's being planned for X amount of dollars, $70 million or whatever. And then will it say at no impact to the taxpayer?
I'll have to check with bond counsel. I'm not 100% sure.
Any other questions or comments? Trustee Goodrich.
I just want to thank, um, everybody, um, including the public, including the people that, you know, that have come to numerous board meetings on this difficult, uh, subject. And of course, I want to thank, you know, superintendent and administrators and all the board. I mean, this is not easy, uh, but it's something that's, it's kind of affect the students for the next 75 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments before we vote? So the recommended action is the Antioa Board of Education hereby approves adding one proposition to the May 20, the May 20th, 2025 ballot. And we'll vote. Trustee Knudsen?
Aye.
Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Merrill?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you all so much. It's, it's a, it's a big deal. Thank you.
Unfortunately, I have to share that the boys team lost this evening.
All right. That's unfortunate. Okay. Item 11.02, discuss the nomination for our Ulster BOSI's, uh, board seat. Do we have, do you have, um, I don't have any narrative with this. Do you want to just talk a little bit about our nominee?
Um, there are two, uh, BOSI's board seats right now that are, um, going to be, um, open, that are, uh, considered at-large seats. And historically, districts, um, although the seats were at-large, the district who had an incumbent usually maintained their seat. Um, but this year, there, uh, there was a resignation. Um, I believe there is one person who will be, um, appointed temporarily to the unexpired term, who will then be on the ballot. Um, and the other district that held the other open seat has not identified a candidate yet. So we have a community member who, um, is a, uh, parent of a graduate, a fairly recent graduate, who worked for Ulster BOSI's for a number of years, decades, I might say, um, as an administrator, uh, worked in various, uh, areas within Ulster BOSI's as an administrator and who had, um, reached out to me and said, you know, if you have, um, if you have a opportunity, I would love to serve in that capacity. So I reached out to her. Um, she came in and met with President Bishop and I to just talk about it. Her one concern, um, was that she didn't want to run against an incumbent Ulster BOSI's, uh, board member because she wanted to honor the fact that if, if there was somebody who has been actively serving, she didn't want to upset them. Um, but at this point, there are, there is not an incumbent Ulster BOSI's board seat. So she wrote, um, a letter of interest for our board to read and kind of get a sense of who she is and what her experiences are, what her experiences and how she's really incredibly qualified for this role. Uh, and so I wanted to just bring it to the board. Um, we don't need to act on it tonight. Can think about it if you have follow-up questions, if anyone, um, wants to have me get any additional information. I'm sure she'd be happy to supply it. We want to just bring this to the board as a suggestion and see how everybody felt. It's, it's sort of unusual to have a community member who's really that qualified and actively interested in that role.
Trustee Knudsen.
Just a quick procedural question. So if we nominated her and then, and then, so there will be, is, is it safe to say at this point, there will be no incumbent?
That is my understanding. There is not an incumbent for her to race against.
So that hurdle is gone?
Correct.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
And for clarification, she would, she would be, um, an at-large, uh, board member from Antioa, and she would serve along with our trustee Story, who is, yeah, who is, who will remain on the BOSI's board for her term. Any other questions? All right. Uh, item 11.03 is discuss the 20, uh, 2025-26 school calendar.
Um, so there is a draft 25-26 school calendar loaded into board docs for everyone to look at. Um, I did send it to our union leaders last week, um, so that they can take a look at it and provide any feedback. I haven't heard back from, uh, any of them at this point. One of the, um, one of the things that is different in this draft calendar is that there are two superintendents conference days at the beginning of the school year. And we have, we've really kind of debated, um, whether that is the right step to take or not, because it's really very impactful in terms of providing PD for our faculty and staff as we're coming back into the school year, because so much of the first superintendent's conference day is taken up with mandatory training. And there's just a lot of things that have to happen that aren't really professional development. Um, and the, the downside, so that's a huge benefit to have that extra day. And I know Assistant Superintendent Laffin would do a, a dance of joy to have that, um, to start off the school year. The downside is that for those students who go to, um, Ulster BOSI's programming, which, um, is not an insignificant number of our high school students, they would not start their BOSI's programs until the third, our third day. Um, but there, that is not consistent among Ulster County districts. So there are districts who start on that second day, but there are other districts who do traditionally have two conference days in the beginning. So really, the BOSI's programs, although they may start on that second day, they can't really cover that much because all their students are not there. So it's, it's not as, um, as negative as it sort of first appears. Um, and in the calendar, next year, we can only manage to have six snow days, which after this year, I'm hopeful about, um, because of the way all of the holidays fall. So we will recognize, uh, Yom Kippur and Rosh Hashanah, and then all the other holidays that have come into, um, our calendar recently, Lunar New Year, Juneteenth. Those didn't used to be part of our, um, annual calendar, but now they are. So we're not asking for, um, approval or action tonight, but we want to kind of get that out there and allow people to give us feedback, because no matter how many times we look at it, somehow, a week later, two weeks later, or a month later, somebody says, geez, how did you not see that? Well, I don't know, 80 of us looked at it, but the more people that look at it, um, the better.
Trustee Lynch?
I did notice, um, voting day is also a, a conference day, it looked like. Is that correct? Um, sorry, I didn't, I didn't bring it in front of me. No, yeah, I thought the day, the election day. So, yeah, it was like a day off. I just wanted to make sure we reviewed that again, because that was a concern last year. The November.
But what, what, oh, that's like local town elections, I guess? Yeah, okay.
Um, the other thing I'll just say, which I think I say every year, but I just, again, want to reiterate, you know, the majority of our students are between kindergarten and sixth grade, and having so many days off is such a hardship for parents who seek, um, childcare. And so, um, particularly in that first week of school, uh, there's really very little options for camps or anything. Uh, most things end in the middle of August. And so those last few weeks are very stressful for families with young children. So I just want to be thoughtful about balancing that. Um, there's just a couple stretches of weeks in there where there's not a, a full week of school. Um, and, you know, again, working parents asking for the day off or coverage or half days or whatever consistently is really burdensome on, on some working parents. So I just want to be mindful of that as we look at the various options.
Trustee Goodrich?
Could we also add to the, uh, calendar, the, uh, PSAT National Merit Scholarship dates, it's in October sometime. I, I think, if we could get that on the calendar.
I think we discussed that this year, and because that's so grade cohort specific, and there are other things for other grade cohorts, that it would start to take over our calendar. If it, it should be on our school district website calendar.
So this will come up for a vote at the next meeting or sometime soon?
Depending on how quickly I get feedback from the unions. As soon as I get them all corralled, then we will bring it back to the board for a vote.
Any other comments on the calendar? Five-minute break? Okay. Five-minute break. Okay, five-minute break. All right, we are on to approving our consent agenda. The board hereby approves items number 13.02 through 13.09. May I have a first? Trustee Ramondo, second. Trustee Knutson? Any questions or comments?
I have reviewed Schedule U, and everything appears to be in order.
Excellent. All right, we'll vote on the consent agenda. Trustee Knutson?
Aye.
Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
That's unanimous, thank you. Sorry. On to item 14.01. The Board of Education hereby approves items number 14.02 through 14.06, including contracts and independent contract retainers. May I have a first? Trustee Ramondo, second. Trustee Goodrich? Any questions or comments? All right, we'll vote. Trustee Knutson?
Aye.
Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
That's unanimous, thank you. Items 15.01 through 15.05, committee reports. Have any committees met in the last two weeks?
I just wanted to make a second, or just a question about sort of the order of things. As trustee Jerome mentioned, the communications committee met with a few vendors and Boces and this parent square, as well as some of our principals were also a part of the demo. And I think one of the things that was just so obvious, obviously, is the engagement of parents, as we've talked about, but also the efficiencies for staff. I mean, in that exact same day that we got the demo, I was getting like two or three different permission slip requests and, you know, other things that like parents, it's, they're doing so much, our staff, to stay in touch with us and chase us down. I just can't say enough about how exciting it could be. But I really do want to also focus on the engagement of our, of our families. I think that's, again, going to be an immediate change. And I'm just wondering now, we didn't, you know, what is the process for something like that? It's a huge endeavor. The nice thing that's important for all of us to think about is that it does integrate with our existing systems, which is important. But, but obviously, there's a cost involved, there's an implementation, there's a whole bunch of things. I couldn't, curious to think about what comes next from the superintendent, yeah.
I believe that we were supposed to be receiving a cost proposal. We haven't received that yet. And then, I'm assuming that they will be able to provide us with a, a sample implementation schedule. I don't know how long it might take. Our Director of Technology was part of that discussion as well. And so, yes, all the, all the people who are really involved in our communication systems now were part of the conversation. So, we just need to get a little more information. And I'm sure Holly will follow up on that. But as I said, unfortunately, she's wrapped up in jury duty this week and next week.
I, I just want to add that I think in that, in that demo and meeting, our technology director, John Reimer, asked if, if they could set up a sandbox so that you can start, you know, perusing the product. And I'm wondering if after that happens, maybe they could set up a sandbox for the board to, you know, kind of play with and take a look at before we, would that, is that something that they could do? That's what I thought. You know, so that the trustees can, can, you know, give it a shot before we, you know, make a purchase. Trustee Knutson?
I didn't see the demo, so just, I was just wondering, is there any overlap between this product and diligent community? And would that create any confusion between where to go?
John's saying no.
That, that it would be different types of things in each place, completely different. And my other question is, is there any digital divide sort of concerns in our district that we put everything online and there are families that that just wouldn't reach?
I think more people have cell phones than necessarily have cable and Wi-Fi in their house. But we would still continue to put things on our website as well. And, you know, I think it's just a, it's a more, it's a more all-encompassing way to communicate with families and community.
Thank you.
Any other committee reports? Old business, I think we've tabled our discussion for tonight on chapter three of the Governance Core 2.0. We'll resume at our next board meeting, okay? New business? Trustee Knutson, were you going to talk about our practice of responding to correspondence?
Yes, well, just, we had a lot, we had, there was a lot of letter writing from the community. And I was confused about the expectations of, what the expectations are in the community in terms of responses and timeliness and how to, we as a seven-member board to, you know, wordsmith responses seemed impractical to me. So, I just wanted to open up that topic to what we think would be a good procedure going forward. And one, one thing that came up was, you know, to try to really respond quickly. And I just wanted to throw out that I think sometimes speed is not the most important equity in terms of how you're going to respond. Some, you know, sometimes information is developing, and you might know a lot more if you answer a few days from now than if you answer tomorrow. So, I, I would just, my goal would be to see a procedure and a policy or a norm that sort of is practicable and effective at answering community, communication. And I wonder what anybody else's ideas are.
I, I had some thoughts about it just because I, either I forgot or can't find, you know, where the process or procedure is written or, and there's certainly, certainly no language in a policy about the 24-hour rule. And also, just the, the consideration of responding to every correspondence that we receive. And so, I, I did think about correspondence that we've received over time. And many times when the superintendent is, is copied or is, is one of the respondents to, to an email, if there, if it's an issue that she can address or a question that she can answer, then she, she takes the lead. In the past, when we've received, you know, controversial or contentious emails, not that all of these emails were, and very, very, very few were, but there were a few that were a little edgy. We have not responded to those in the past. You know, nobody has, to my knowledge, although the superintendent may have. Sometimes we just, you know, let them go. So, I think we do need to, you know, think about what, what our process is. Yes.
Is there a chain of command thing? I mean, that's the other thing that I don't know whether you're aware of, but certainly I have been chided in the past for not recognizing that there's a chain of command. If it goes to the board, you respond. And if it goes to you, the superintendent, you respond, we do not respond. I think that the email response in question, just to contextualize it for people listening, was just, it was full of a lot of detail, and it was very long. For myself, I can see that there's a difficulty in offering a very brief response for, that maybe it's cold or didn't, didn't add much value. But then, it gets, again, very subjective once you start to go into a really long explanation, right? So, is there, I don't know, is there a way to lead people to more information? Of course, we always want to hear people, we're all reading them. We cannot discuss them. That is, we are not allowed to discuss them. And I think, again, the general public needs to know that. We have to discuss things in public. So, that's another reason for brevity sometimes in our responses. So, I just, I just want people to understand that our hands are a bit tied as we get these, these emails and how to respond. Certain people may only respond. We can't go back and forth. I was bothered by that one because it was so long, there was so much I had to comment on. And we're not supposed to do that, so I'd rather not send it. So, anyways, that's a fuller picture.
I understand, and I, one second. Like, oh my God, I lost my thought. Um, wait, it'll, it'll come back. Yeah, the, the thing that I, that I thought about with, you know, all of, many of the emails that we've received, either asking us to, you know, split the bond or to, you know, to stay with one bond or, you know, whatever, many of those emails were very, very passionate, right? And I felt like, you know...
If there was, if there was a question, if there was something that I felt I needed to respond to, I did, and I reached out to a number of them, but many of them didn't have a question. And they were often sent to the board and to me. And I didn't feel like I was empowered to respond on behalf of the board either. So I think it would be good to have a process.
I was just going to comment, I actually, I think it's really important that we respond. I feel really strongly about it. There is a time, and I just don't want to go back to that, where there was zero response from, and it felt like this opaque, you know, your email went into a dark hole and nobody knew what, if anyone was reading it. There's a lack of communication, a lack of transparency. I think this board has done so much to restore that. And I feel really strongly that we respond to everybody who writes to us. I don't think it's that tricky. I, I, I'm the one that brought up the 24-hour thing. I think I was trying to remember how it came together. But I think actually, do you, I don't know if any of you three remember this, but there was actually a potential that we were supposed to respond within four hours. Do you remember this? I remember vividly having this conversation in the high school auditorium and we're all like, and so then we sort of agreed to this 24-hour rule, which was to say, and that if we couldn't, like, we would say that, if it was something that required more discussion, you know, we could say, you know, "Thank you for your email, this, you know, requires more discussion" or something. But we'd still try to respond to every single person within 24 hours. And I think the, and so maybe I'm making this up, I don't know. It wasn't a dream, certainly wasn't a dream, because it was hotly debated. And it must have been now three years ago, because I remember we were all there. But anyway, I'm very open to changing that and whatever feels right to the board. But I just think this board has done a lot to restore trust and transparency. And I, I just feel very strongly that we maintain that.
Trustee Knutson?
Okay, I didn't, so I've just been thinking as we're talking. And it seems to me that we can, we can divide the emails we get into categories, right? So if somebody is just expressing, venting spleen or not asking anything of us, just telling us, "I'm mad about this" or whatever, I think we should respond. But, you know, I don't think it requires a long response. And it could be, you know, and I, what really ticked my brain was when somebody said, "Point them toward..." This issue was discussed in the board meeting of, and the recordings on YouTube, if you want to know more. You know, if it's on a topic that they're interested in and we know we've discussed, just pointing them to the YouTube would be helpful, I think. When somebody's asking a factual question, like, you know, what is the, you know, I can't come up with one right now, but if it's a simple factual answer, that's also, we should respond as soon as we can because it's a simple thing, right? The hard ones are, why blah, 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 you know, why are you doing it this way? Which is like an essay, it's a paragraph. And I think that's where we get into difficulty. But I do think, you know, if we had sort of a standard way of responding to different types of emails, depending on what they're asking or engaging in or not engaging in, that might just, you know, eliminate the need to agonize over it.
Thank you. Trustee Ramondo and then trustee Jerome?
So my, I think the next steps could be, we contact NISBA. We see what they recommend. We, I agree, everything needs to be responded to, even if it's a simple statement that they've been heard and acknowledged. Different lanes, if that's what NISBA recommends and giving them education. And then we make it a board norm, because then it's, we have a reference versus who knows what we remember anymore. So I would say, you know, we bring it back once we've done a little bit of research.
That sounds great. I also wonder whether the comms committee, with, especially with the stick, rather than laying it on you, I'm thinking, oh, it could be we, the same way that we do the board briefs. If there's one that's a special challenge, you can loop us in. We could draft something and just send it for like a basic, like, "Are you guys okay with this?" But then at least there'd be less than a quorum to be there to figure out that response. But I definitely like the idea of having like different, everybody responded to different levels and checking with NISBA is great.
So I just searched our minutes for the past three years. And on Tuesday, September 26, 2023, at the board meeting, the communications committee, it apparently was a discussion, says, "Communications committee wants to continue to be responsible for all email communications from the community that come to the board email. Trustee Bishop will continue to be responsible to draft an email response and send it to the entire board for a quorum response." That's all it says, but no time limit.
Trustee Goodrich?
I'm always hopeful that one of the responses could be, "We have that information here on the website and here's a link to it," right? That would be useful. And on that note, I think a lot of these presentations that we've been given, that you guys have been doing, I don't think they're on the website yet. So I could be wrong. They're on. I couldn't, I couldn't find them, because I was going to suggest, hey, over here, right? But that was just me, I looked around. So, but anyway, that's the quick and easy, and the nice thing about providing a link is now we're not drafting, trying to rewrite the same subject multiple times. And then, you know, you've got to, they're not exactly the same. And then the public, you know, picks it apart and complains, "Well, you said this and then you said that," right? We want to be consistent. I think that's really important.
All right, so we have a, we have a task and we'll bring information back. And then we'll decide on wording for our norms, okay? Any other new business? Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
I'm sure we all want to go home. I just want to say, I brought this up before, but I would love to have a tab on the website for new or possible parents who are looking at the school to get information on tours. Like, it's literally, there is nothing like that. And you know I'm so scared about enrollment. And I just feel like there should be something that someone can go to the Ontario website and immediately see, like, "Here's how I tour Bennett, here's how I register." Like, I just don't know if that's so obvious.
Yeah, something, some, even some CTA on the homepage that takes you to a section for new parents. I totally agree. That's, have it nice prime real estate, above the fold, whatever.
Like, prospective parents on a website shouldn't be exclusive to private schools. We have prospective parents too.
We do have on the homepage, a button on the right-hand side for registration for new parents, but we can certainly add to that.
I think there's just steps before people register. Like, I just think tours, for example, makes such a difference. Like, anyone I've taken on a tour of Woodstock, register. So I think that's something we just need to be a little more proactive about.
Trustee Knutson?
I just want to interject that that linguistic distinction between prospective and new is really important, because new parents are new to the school, they've signed up, right? And prospective are looking, right? And so, new parents is not the word you want if that's who you want to capture. You want to say, you know, it could be a question, thinking of enroll, you know, whatever. But just wanted to, that's an important distinction.
Is that something a committee might want to address? I'm just thinking, like, where would that fall? So that it's under a smaller group that would maybe think about how to do that? Communications? Great, okay. Well, maybe we can talk about it. We'll talk about it, yeah, okay. All right. Any requests for information? Okay, our next meeting is March 18th and we'll be in the middle school, high school at 6:00 PM. May I have a motion to adjourn?
No meeting Friday, do you want to just confirm that?
Yes, that's what I was going to say.
Right, right, yes, yes.
Because we mentioned it earlier, we should mention that Friday is off now.
Correct, that's right, thank you. We are not meeting on Friday. And thank you all so much for our resolution. May I have a motion to adjourn? Trustee Ramondo, second. Trustee Jerome, all in favor? Thank you all very much.